Your line.
All right. All right, we'll call a meeting to order. Welcome to a special workshop meeting of the directors of Nevada Irrigation District for the beginning of the next hundred years of NID. How special is that? For those of you that are watching today or listening, this is a workshop and so therefore will be less formal. And if you'd like to comment or ask questions at any time during the meeting, start on your phone and we'll try to keep track of that and let you talk at that time. Sorry, and comment at that time. Also, we'll try to stick to the agenda of being time certain. At four o'clock, we'll have our Plan for Water workshop start at that time. So meantime, we have Engineering Department update. Mr. Roderick, welcome.
Thank you.
I've got two things. I'm sorry, Doug. Forgot to. Would you all join me in the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, Madam Secretary, what do you call the role, please?
Division one.
Here.
Division two.
Here.
Division three.
Here.
Division four. Here. Division five.
Here.
All right, thank you. Sorry, Doug. We're split up on my part. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. President Beerwagen, board members, staff, Doug Roderick, Engineering Manager, here today to present the Engineering Department update. We've got the last few. You've had several different Department updates, but now this is Engineering.
Chris, this is?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure that one out right now. Hey. I thought I wanted to get to my screen. Notice?
Uh.
Give me one second. You can keep, you can start speaking if you like while I try to get back.
Sure, can do that. Okay, the first part of the presentation will just be talking about a couple of the projects that we did in 2021. Some of the projects we do, which are pipelines, aren't very exciting in terms of pictures. But anyway, we'll go through a couple of projects here. First one.
All right, I have to take care of this.
You want me to keep going away until the picture comes back? Doug, would you please, um, you take your picture. Tap at the bottom, left-hand corner.
Pretty cold in Indiana right now.
Top of twelve.
Yeah. Unreal. I've been minus fifteen and eighteen, no. The next day was twelve, t-shirt, but dry. And.
Sixteen. My T guy. Okay, you want me to just keep going? Or you want me to keep going? All right. So first one was the Altus Sierra tank project that's currently under construction. Excuse me. That contract is roughly a $5.7 million contract to install a three million gallon AWW AD type, type one ten, D one ten tank, which is a pre-stressed concrete tank. That's replacing the existing hyprolone cover that was there. Originally, that used to be an open reservoir that we had of filters and chlorine. I remember we encased that ultimately in the hyprolone covers. Now got away from the hyprolone covers and gone to the, to the concrete tank. There's a couple photos there that you can see. The first one there is showing what the existing, what the old hyprolone cover looked like. It's basically like a big water bed. You're out there and you walk on it. Then the next two pictures are tank in progress. This one was the last, the middle one shows the last wall pore. And then the, the last one shows all the columns on the inside. Since these pictures, um. Okay. Since we've did these pictures, the roof is now actually installed. The D and tanks were scheduled to come out to wrap the tank. But that got delayed due to that storm that we had, so, yeah.
Uh, three million gallons, how many days' supply is that? And how many people does it serve?
So this is, I don't know the specific number on, on that. It's, uh, this serves part of the Altus Sierra system as well as the feet, the inner tie that goes down to the Lake of the Flank system. I don't know the specific.
Is it treated?
Yes.
It's all treated.
Right, yeah. I can get that information for you if you like.
Just, when you, when you run into it, it's not, okay.
It's filled to capacity?
And has the contractor run into expanded costs?
No. So this is basically a design build project. Originally was designed to be a, a larger tank. We reduced it down to three million gallon tanks. We had talked about that before.
Yeah.
So no, we don't have anything at this point.
So they can.
The only real change would be is if we wanted to add something that we didn't have in the initial scope, which is, I don't see that.
So they contain their cost.
Correct.
Good for them.
Yeah.
Is the budget still for the budget that was approved for the five million gallon tank?
Uh, yeah, although I think some of that had been reduced. When that money was moved over to another project, and I don't know if that actually happened or not, so.
Did not exceed the budget amount?
It has not exceeded the budget amount. But the original budget amount was for the larger tank.
Chris was fine.
Yeah, for the five million. So we reduced it. So it was a six point something was the original contract amount.
Six point seven.
Yeah, we reduced it down to this five point seven. Do you have a question?
I just wondered if it's filled to capacity of the three million. I mean, is that what we need for the?
So it depends. So, so the, kind of a tricky answer. During certain times of the year, the tanks are set at certain elevations. When it's less demand requirements, typically the tanks can be set lower so that we get more water moving through the tanks, they won't become stagnant. Whereas when we have the higher demands and the fire season, that takes much more. Okay, next project.
Do this like, get it home?
Okay. Burnburn Lane PRV. This was originally a, a small four-inch AC pipe that served about ten to twelve properties. What we decided to do is to get some additional circulation in the system. So we took the, this was actually on a PRV, which we need to pressure reduce the, the pressure in the line for those customers. We actually got rid of that PRV and we connected it a little further upstream off of, name, I think it's Jasper Agit Court, so that we can continue a loop through there. And then we installed individual PRVs that those tend to level folks so that their, the pressures don't exceed what their house is going to be able to handle, what has been received for ice machines, et cetera. So it was an old pipe, it was four inches, AC, it was installed in the, probably in the sixties, the AC pipe. And so it was a combination of getting rid of the old pipe as well as adding some circulation to our system. So we didn't, we didn't do this project. Hold on, sorry.
Um, Doug, are the projects that we're looking at now, are they considered complete? Burnburn Lane and Altus Sierra?
Yes, oh, so, so Burnburn Lane is complete.
Uh huh.
Altus Sierra is doing the construction.
On the construction.
Correct.
So as you go through, could you?
Yeah.
Where they are and their process. Thank you.
Also, with Burnburn Lane, well, this was the district construction project. So when you see the construction costs, that includes our labor costs to do the work as well as the material. Whereas you look at something like Altus Sierra, that's the actual construction cost because it's a contract that goes out. So I'll kind of explain those as we go to the different ones and see a difference in the costs. Uh, next one's, always phase one. As you're probably all aware of that one, we got that finished up. So now it's in its maintenance period, so everything is going well on that project. It was nineteen, I think the original contract was nineteen million, six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. We actually came in slightly under that. We needed to use some of the rock that we had sitting in the contract. So the final contract number is actually a little bit less than what was approved. We have had some issues already with rocks falling on it during the last winter storms. We had one very large rock that had to be moved with equipment that hit it. It did crack the surface a little bit. Don't anticipate it having any structural damage on the inside. This spring, before irrigation season starts, we're going to do inspection as part of the maintenance package with contractor and we'll take a real close look at that to make sure nothing structural has been done. But by just doing what we had hoped to do, if that rock had fallen on the old flume, that would, that would have come the wall right over. Quite a mess, so. So it's performing very well.
Yeah, I question earlier, even when we first charged it out, it was hard to see.
Correct. We saw more in the first season than we did in the second half, the second season that was installed. Second season, we haven't really seen any. First season, we've seen those. They've all healed up. There's a couple that have very small weeps, but I mean, they're not, they're not running them just weeps. And we'll continue to monitor those, but we anticipate those to heal up as well. Uh, next one, Doty North Canal. This was replacing an existing twenty-four inch cypren that was out there over Doty Ravine, which is actually a family habitat. Placed it with a new thirty inch, it says thirty-six in there, I apologize, it's actually a thirty inch pipe, not a thirty-six inch that was installed. Uh, the first picture on the left you see is what the old one looked like. And then now those other two pictures, the middle one is what it looks like now. And then the picture on the right is just an expansion joint, picture of that, so that that pipe is allowed to move back and forth a little bit, expanding and contracting, depending on temperatures, et cetera. So this one, the construction costs were for the contract, which is six hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars, so. That project went very well. There was a moratorium on that facility, so that more time is going to lift it, assuming, you know, of course, how the drought and all that, stepping this forward for new services or increases in your existing, but that restriction is now on. And during this last big storm event we had in October, October, we had that big crazy rain. It was nowhere near in terms of reaching the pipe, et cetera, so it performed very well as well.
Um, was the issue resolved about access from the north side of the bridge? Were you able to use that bridge to do the construction? Did that help with the?
Yes, it did. It did. So it helped in terms of we can use it for our slick line, for the concrete pumping. Then of course, the contractor, we can move back and forth. We did have some temporary construction easements that we got from the property owner to come from, to be from the north side of the ravine. So the contractor utilized that quite a bit as well, but.
But that got all resolved, didn't it?
Yes, correct. Yep.
Yep.
So we utilize both sides.
And this is complete now?
Yes, that's complete and in service, yeah. So it basically was finished in the spring, so this went through the irrigation seasons.
Is that a year of rock now?
Uh, yes. Uh, no, 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 take that back. Doty North does get turned off, so it's already tried and, which is why we can do the construction without my help. Uh, next one is French Dam. We just finished that up like this fall. Big issues with that, of course, was just the access and ability to do equipment. There's very minimal equipment usage we could use out there, so most all of this work was handwork, which includes even moving material and carrying stuff down the bottom. It was quite a feat by the contractor. They camped out there this week. By the end of the project, those guys were getting pretty tired. Didn't want to deal with that anymore, as well as our inspector Chris, who basically lived up in Truckee for those three months that we built this project. It was a lot of effort on him, having to go out there every day and stay with the family. Got the project done. You can see in, in the pictures here, the first one on the left, that's a picture showing that we've peeled it off and started to lay the, the wire mesh wire back on top. The middle one is basically when it was just finished, they were starting to move all the scaffolding so that we can get that out of there, so that the water start to rise up for Mother Nature. Added a problem. And then the last one is the, is the rear down at the outfit. And that one was a really tough spot in terms of everything having to be hand delivered and mixed and placed, rocks dug out, trenches dug, all by hand. So it was quite an effort for those folks, but now it's flowing water and we can measure it well and be able to measure the flows that we need to for the future, so.
Is that the one that got snowed on besides?
Correct. Yeah, access in and out became very difficult as the rain and the snow came, so, yes, it was a lot of, it was entertaining.
Yeah, but you didn't have to spend the night up there, right?
I did not.
I was gonna say, you can see it as entertaining.
I just have to spend the night in the tent, yeah.
Yeah, right.
I'm aware, this is, this picture on the left, I guess, is the gauging station and?
On the right, yeah.
On the right, yeah. Is there telemetry there or is it, is it a manual read that we go out and read?
I believe there's telemetry there, isn't there? Yeah, there's a, a telemetry there, so we can see it. It's not installed yet. We ran out of time this year, but it'll be finalized for next year. Because the old one was utilized, had that telemetry.
Oh, so for putting it on the?
Yeah, we just cut it off.
Over to you. Oh, good, okay.
Camp Hill, I included this one just because you guys know this one is the big project that's been moving forward this year when we started working on it this last year. Wanted to highlight the fact that we were approved for the Prop sixty-eight, while it was on Gordo and Fish Passage Program grant for one and a half million dollars, so we did get approval for that. So kudos to Tanya for putting that all together and getting that submitted and getting us some additional money to help us complete this. We just had a design discussion with the agencies today, so continuing to move forward to the schedule. Plan to have this project under construction and completed this year, that's still a plan. It'll be a tight window, but we should be able, at this point, we're still comfortable being able to move forward and get to construction. So at some point in the future, we'll be coming to you guys with a construction contract award so we can start building this thing this summer.
Nice. This is permanent, Pat, what's the step?
So that's part of the ongoing process too, working with the PCCP, the Flash County Conservation Plan. Program, thank you. Working with them, they sent us a draft agreement to become a, a member of the program to be able to utilize the PCCP, so we're finalizing that information. Part of that is we have to get our design package to a good enough percentage so that we can submit that as part of a package to be approved, get gone through. But yeah, everything's looking good, we're moving forward. Everybody seems to be on board with the participant. So that's going to be a real benefit to us. Now it's just delineating some of the areas for mitigation that we're going to have, but just mitigation for everything, stuff that's all outlined in the PCCP. But it is going to make our process a lot simpler.
Looking like it's.
Yes, right. There's nothing that, that suggested otherwise at this point. Uh, next one, Loma Rica, set removal. So really what we did this particular year, we just had a stockpile of material that we moved from that location over to the airport and placed it. I thought it was important to put this in there though, to just kind of give a, a discussion on what we've done out there. Moved from the last, the two years, twenty nine, uh, seventeen to twenty nineteen, moved about forty-eight thousand, almost forty-nine thousand cubic feet, or cubic yards of sediment, which equates to about thirty acre feet.
I was gonna ask, thirty acre feet?
Yeah, so the, the reservoir itself has a capacity of about ninety-seven thousand, or ninety-seven acre feet. So we removed about a third, a little bit less than a third of the material out there. But one of the, the things you can look at too is when you see the overall construction costs, just over a million dollars for that roughly thirty acre feet. So that puts you in a price breaker for somewhere around thirty-five thousand dollars. So, and, and this particular project was, was not as simple as you can get because we could dry out the reservoir, we can dig it in site, and we can transport it about five hundred feet to the airport and dump it. So it's about as simple and easy as you can get in terms of, of the removal of that. So you can see the, the effort and the cost associated with, with removal of sediment, so.
Where are we with the sediment study for the dis, other reservoirs in the district?
So, so we are in the, so we are in the process of moving forward with it as part of the Plan for Water. We're going to be bringing it forward in the Plan for Water process.
When we have it slated for? Um, no, I think we were going to talk about it probably in Watershed and some of the solutions. One of the challenges with the sediment study is that the, you know, making a determination on whether to remove sediment from specific reservoirs really is related to how much additional storage may be needed because the cost is so high. So for example, in this situation, what, we said thirty-five thousand an acre foot. Well, if you only need, you know, fifty acre feet, okay, maybe that's a reasonable project. If you need, I'm just making up numbers, twenty-five thousand acre feet, then that's probably not a reasonable method for obtaining additional storage. So I think from a stat perspective, we'd like to have a better understanding of the cost and benefit value of each sediment removal per reservoir, as opposed to bringing it too early and then making decisions outside of the context of the larger storage that we need.
Okay.
So, so to follow up on that, at thirty-five thousand dollars an acre foot, is that the cost?
For this particular project?
Yeah.
Correct.
But you can't translate that to all sedimentation regions?
Can.
You can, but then in the sediment removal studies, there is some cost per acre foot fo, estimated for each.
I mean, it's expensive.
It is, because as you get real large, you get some cost and benefit of having big equipment to be able to move a lot of material, but you also then maybe have a longer trucking costs and other things associated with where it's at, so.
And it's a problem where you. Yeah, it's a problem, where do you put it? Not everybody wants it.
Yeah, disposable, correct.
Yeah.
All the material can be utilized, maybe relatively stand, find silt and some of that stuff, which really doesn't have much commercial value to it. So finding the location, and even if you find location, it's the cost to truck it there.
And what's the cheapest you've seen a sedimentation project, removal project cost?
This would be fairly expensive.
This is about as cheap as you can get based on, on the location and the effort to pull it out. I'd have to look at like Newtown, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but we have, that's part of what we're doing in that sediment study, but.
The costs generally go up from here.
This is about as simple and easy a removal process as we can have.
I mean, if my figures are right, a hundred thousand acre feet would cost three point eight five million dollars, a billion dollars.
Billion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, damn the size.
And some of the discussions, when you look at like Rawlins, for example, that may have ten or twelve thousand acre feet of sediment buildup within it, and the benefit of pulling that material out versus the cost to do it, you may be talking several hundred million dollars to remove that extra ten thousand acre feet. Cost benefit, whether that makes sense to do that or not is a discussion we're all going to have. Whether to go to that, or maybe look at ways to control and try to minimize anything else happening. Those are the things that we want to look at too, whether you do some different redams up above, or you can clean the, on a regular basis, that kind of thing.
And it's more costly to do it if it's underwater?
Yeah.
Yeah, or you're taking a reservoir offline for an extended period of time.
Right.
For Rawlins, it would be off for quite a while.
Yeah, and Comey was one, we did both, right? We did it in the dry as well as in the west, so we have some comparables to that, that was done. We did the dredging, did the, the drive, so.
From a long-term perspective, it probably makes a little bit more financial sense to start focusing on keeping sediment out.
I have a quick question, Doug.
Yes.
So on the, the reservoir storage chart that was published one forty? Storage chart.
Mister Rotten's storage chart?
Yes. Um, it says, you know, eighty-six percent of the eight-year average and fifty-six percent of capacity. And does that capacity consider the total two hundred and eighty thousand acre feet of storage that, that have, or does that capacity take into consideration?
Uh, that's a good question. I, I don't think it takes into consideration the saltation, but let me confirm with Chip when he comes in for the Plan for Water.
I think it's, that's.
Yeah, that's a great question.
I think it's based on the lower, notable elevation with regards to the original capacity curve, so I guess it probably doesn't.
That's a significant increase.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's material.
Same with Deadpool, right? You have Deadpool.
Right. The accident said that it's two hundred and eighty for the total capacity, and then the Deadpool's thirty-seven or something.
Right, so there may be some addition.
And then they added for some, but they said there's really only two hundred and two available, but I don't know if that's what the.
What's the numbers?
What the numbers they have.
Right, okay. Okay, we'll hold up for that. There you go. Uh, this one, Loma Rica District Finance Waterline Extension, this was basically the last EWELE that we've done. Currently on hold with those as well. And the picture's not too exciting. It basically, the project is complete, other than we've got a little bit of surfacing to do on some of the patch paving that we have to go back and finish, and we're going to have to wait till weather obviously on that. This is obviously one paid for by the property owners as well as the district. And good news is our construction cost came in slightly under than what the original bid was, which was six hundred and twenty thousand, so, so these folks give a break in terms of cost associated with that. Uh, next one's San Timon pipe man. I apologize, the pictures, they're all old pictures. I put the wrong picture in the wrong folder. But this was replacement of roughly fifteen hundred feet of pipe, eighteen, eighteen-inch pipe is what we installed. This was a maintenance constructed project, so the cost that you see for total construction costs includes our labor, labor as well as material. Again, this was an old facility, had trouble with, at the end with the trash rack, where it was a little overflow and run down the driveway and this front yard. We also had the pipe that ran through the middle of this driveway and front yard, so we wanted to get rid of all that, as well as there's a moratorium on the Gold Blossom Canal. And so this new pipe that's just getting in service will be able to allow more water to go through it. We're anticipating that moratorium being time will be lifted for the twenty twenty-two irrigation season, so, because the facility is operational at this point. Hopefully that is the case, and so folks, there's a list of folks that have been interested in water on that facility that will have access to it as well. Again, depending on the drought conditions and what's available for new customers, upsizing of existing customers. Uh, last one is.
No, he just, I, I put him on the hot seat, so.
Uh, this was the, the phase five B of the George Lake Wildwood Vet Project. This again was constructed by crews internally, so you see the cost there, the four ninety-eight, that includes labor and materials, et cetera. We had estimated six hundred and fifty-four thousand for this particular stretch of the pipe. That also included the P R V, which we have not yet upgraded, so it's kind of right in line with what we were anticipating, and that's with all crews doing this work. It was installation of the, of the pipeline, which is basically parallel to an existing ten-inch line that we have between Sierra College and Deacon, Deacon Court. So yeah, so that project is, has been installed, and I think they may have still be waiting for a couple valves for a final tie-in. I don't think that's happened yet. There's been a big delay on the big high-pressure valves in terms of getting equipment from manufacturer, so I'm not sure, I don't think we still have received that. We've ordered that months ago.
Uh, two questions. So there's a twenty-inch pipe in there now, or the?
That will be installed, correct.
Yeah, okay. And then, but we budgeted more for this phase, didn't we?
I'd have to confirm.
I thought it was up to two million dollars. But we couldn't get an easement on certain phases.
Correct, so we couldn't get the easement on the, on down by the, by the church.
Right.
We don't have received that, we have got the adhesion now, but correct, so we cut it up into a smaller piece and just did this first smaller section that our crews instructed in.
So the rest of the money got thrown back in the general fund or another phase?
Yeah, I would assume it got back in the general fund because we didn't roll money over from last year's budget, this year's budget.
I can confirm for you.
And we didn't have anything slated for this year. There's a budget for this. And we didn't have anything slated for this year, in terms of budget for this.
Just, just didn't want it to go away.
Yeah.
So, um, what is the, when you look at the construction costs for N I D, uh, supporting construction projects versus externally construction projects, how do those, I mean, when are we making a decision to do something internal versus external, and how do we, um, evaluate that situation?
So, there's, there's a couple pieces. Um, I think we're, we're having some discussions about what types of projects our maintenance crews, construction crews work on now. Um, typically what you've, part of how we look at this is the fact that the labor material comes out of a different section of the budget that's already been approved for those folks to be working throughout the year. And so, the capital impact for a project is truly just materials, um, which makes that number quite a bit smaller. So, it's a little hard to truly prove that out and have that discussion whether we get to a point, it's mostly driven by size of the project, and what kind of time our, our maintenance folks have. Do they have enough time to be able to build this project, or maybe just a small inlet structure, that type of thing?
The current capital program for twenty twenty-two does not contemplate maintenance, doing any of these large capital projects. Um, inherently, public employees are more expensive than contract staff, um, due to the long-term pension obligations than just even healthcare obligations and everything else we pay for. One of the other considerations that always concerns me is that when, if you go through a difficult financial period or, you know, you want to spend money, or don't spend money on something else, it's hard when your staffing capital projects with public employees, because then you'd be in a position of delaying off as opposed to just not contracting projects out. It's not typical to see public employees doing large-scale construction projects. There's a little bit more of an incentive for contractors to be doing it faster.
So, with five hundred thousand, that's a project?
Yeah. That would be a project in this next, um, the current budget that you're not seeing staff doing.
Yeah.
That's a project that we would now be contracting out. And that's part of the reason why we are able to reduce some of the labor costs associated with the maintenance department is from kind of ratcheting back the number of capital type of projects that they do and contracting those out.
Yeah.
Okay, just a quick, uh, these are all projects that were part of the C I P that you guys approved in the budget for this coming year, um, five point seven million dollars for projects, the largest rather than being in Hanfield. Um, so this is a relatively smaller, lighter C I P project load for us this year, um, which I'll get to in a little bit, which gives us some opportunity to do some other things. So, um, anyway, there's nothing here that you guys haven't already seen. This is all part of the group project.
And Doug, really quick before we move on, maybe Chip can weigh in on Director Peter's question regarding whether or not the weekly storage report, the capacity percentage that is shown includes any consideration of the sedimentation, or is it just water elevation?
Yeah, so this is a great question. The two hundred and seventy thousand acre feet in total storage does not include any offsets from Deadpool or siltation.
Okay.
Overall capacity at, at the state of the brand. And then, the Altus here reservoir has, uh, basically the Loma Rica treated water system has five thousand connections on it and can also support Lake of the Pines, which has roughly two thousand five hundred connections on it, something in that neighborhood. So, very substantial piece of infrastructure.
A critical, critical piece.
So, great that engineering's tackled that for us and got rid of the floating, floating reservoir.
The segue on this, the state doesn't count the sedimentation either of the Deadpool. So, when you look at four point four million acre feet at Shasta, that's what it was when it was brand new, not now. So, it's consistent all the way through.
Uh, let's see, four o'clock, right? I'm not sure we can... So, next is talk about some of the different departments within engineering, uh, business development services, which is one person I shamen. I won't read through every detail here, uh, but basically, this is the interaction to the public. And part of all this is there's multiple folks with some evening purpose that are involved, whether it's fire control that is being integrated for engineers, or those developer install projects have older engineers and then ultimately our inspectors who are the pioneers and eyes for us on the ground are being able to, to go through those and make sure they get installed properly, um, as well as all these other inquiries that she receives quad bid in terms of that. Unless there's something specific about that, just want to be a little, little, um, not into reading every single one in here unless you guys really think that's important to do that. Uh, next one's encroachments. We have one person in there, um, that's Trevor. So, he's involved with all the encroachment violations as well as the requirements. People come in, they want to install a culvert, they need to replace a culvert, or they want to install a bridge, or whatever the case may be, um, he also gets feedback from operations and maintenance in terms of facilities that are failing or having issues with. He goes out and makes contacts with those property owners to tell them that we need to, to need to do this and work on this. Uh, he also works, well, obviously, with the, some of the temporary stuff, P G and E, get those folks lined up as well. And he works quite a bit with both maintenance and ops, because they're the ones that see the stuff. Yeah.
Um, for everybody, maybe somebody knows what this is, but worked with maintenance to upgrade three blowoffs due to property owners' encroachment activity. What is that?
A blowoff valve, so, so it's either a treated water or raw water blowoff, which basically means there's a low spot in the pipe, where those cimelations and stuff can settle, as well as being able to drain the facility. And so, we use those to either blow out the line, keep it clean, or use it for draining. And some of those have been placed or, or were there originally, and then somebody came and built a home, and now this, the blowoff sits right on their driveway or right in their backyard or something like that. So, we tend to have to kind of work around some of those things with that.
And then, um, also, under the encroachment violations, I remember, my goodness, it's been a year, year and a half, where we had a presentation about the encroachment violations, um, from the property owner in Colby?
Yeah.
What, whatever happened with that?
So, I think Monica might have mentioned that in her presentation, but, um, we're going to be, Trevor's going to be working with Monica's crew this summer, uh, this year, we're going to clean up that, we're going to clean up that. The direction that we receive, I think for the most part, try to, try to work with the encroachments that are currently there, get those grandfathers in and up to date as best we can, and then we're going to be real aggressive moving forward if somebody were to try to see something out of that before it actually gets put in. There's a few things that we're going to have to look at to see if we...
I mean, some are pretty egregious than others.
Yes, correct. And we have to look to see if whether, you know, add full section out into our reservoir and fill in the material, how that impacts our facility and how we operate, whether we need to remove that, or how to properly remove it, or if we'll just work with them to, to make sure that gets cleaned up and doesn't impact on the fall and that kind of stuff. That, this summer, that's one thing we will be doing.
See, I thought it was going to be, is it drained now? Is the reservoir drained now, or does it drain out? I thought you guys lowered it.
They usually lower it to a certain extent, but then it comes right back up. There's not a lot of storage in Colby, so it fills right back up.
Right, okay. For some reason, I thought that...
This time of year, it's probably full and spilling the reservoir.
That there was a, um, a plan to, when it was lowered, to then go in and talk with the folks about the various encroachments.
That's not really going to build me, but it...
Boat docks. Boat docks and the, you know...
Yeah, most of the boat docks are permitted, um, for the most part, and they get the sticker every year and go up and make sure they have those. There's a lot of other stuff, gazebos, patios, barbecues, boat ramps, all those other kind of things that have been put in over the years that we got to clean up. Uh, right away, folks, um, big asset tour, because I'm going to give you a lot of our facilities are really old, and they may or may not have easements, or it's real old and takes a lot of information, there's a lot of history there. And we have two folks, uh, in our right away department, and actually, one is, uh, one and two hats. Our senior right away agent is also our current interim surveyor, so, um, he's doing a little bit of both at the moment. Yeah, I won't go into any specific details here, although, uh, they do a lot of work, and there's a lot of, a lot of history, a lot of understanding what's going on and how to deal with it. I would guess I will point out the one, which is Chicago Park Power High House, that went through quite a long ordeal, court ordeal. Uh, but we've got that wrapped up now, so that's good.
So, Doug, unless I notice that, uh, since I've been watching this one, I know they're, um...
Yeah.
So, that's an interesting pipe that you go after, go clean it up with easements if there aren't. I'm assuming they didn't have any of it previously, right?
Right, there's either not easements or maybe realigning sections of the pipe.
Right.
Or we need to get new easements, because maybe it's a cross-country check in, which is very difficult for us to maintain and operate, get it out into the roads, but the private roads, it could be a combination of the two. There's a lot of facilities where, you know, we have stuff out there, but the easements aren't necessarily real strong for being even able to maintain them or to build new facilities within them.
Yeah.
Uh, survey drafting, there's two folks in there again, one is currently, uh, one and two hats, that's Matt. They do quite a good work for us in terms of total work for design purposes, um, do a lot of GPS work now. We've got a drone, we do work with that, we fly the drone, uh, set some markers, and then, uh, and then have some total work done that way. And they also do all like dam monument checks, so here, either out there, usually in the fall, uh, making sure the dams are staying in place and not moving down the hill.
Good.
All right, I'm super bored.
Comforted by that.
Yeah, I think one of the things that was surveyed for this year, which was, um, indicated in the budget, is that we're going to start contracting out construction staking for, um, capital projects. It's just a really high-risk, high liability activity, and so it's a little bit better to the benefit of the district to contract it out, because if you have a large earthwork bust or any kind of elevation bust, it can be extremely costly.
Uh, and then the drafting folks who work hand in hand with the, oh, I'm sorry.
I have a quick question also, so there's two surveying staff right now, and one of them is interim and helping out with...
Yeah, one of them is acting as our interim surveyor, licensed surveyor. Matt Crowell, our senior right away agent, is also a licensed surveyor. So, he can develop the plaques and sign the plaques, and he will use records and survey and that kind of thing.
Yeah, so we're, we're trying, this is one of those areas where we're kind of trying out a new staffing, um, framework to see if we can handle it with the local, and then contract out any construction staking.
So, so Matt Crowell is the interim surveyor directing?
Right, he's, he's Brett, correct?
Yeah.
He's our senior right away agent, but also licensed surveyor, so... Uh, and then our drafting folks, um, again, working with the surveyors, put projects together. Uh, our drafters do a lot of, uh, a lot of the design work in terms of laying alignments and stuff on, on paper, and then we go in and fine-tune them and make adjustments and redline them. Not all of us in this hearing are, are that efficient, um, that's another, so it's good to have our, our drafting department out there. Uh, and then they also help out with surveying as well, when we need to ride, out of that whole garage, et cetera. And then the last, uh, part is for G I S. We currently have an interim in the, in the G I S, which is Lorley, who is one of our drafters, who also had G I S experience previous to this job. So, when Dean retired, uh, she filled in, and so she's currently dealing with our G I S system and coming up to speed. And, and one of the biggest events is the C M M S, which we're trying to get online here ASAP. Uh, so there's a lot of stuff that she's having to come up to speed on and, and put together, so that's a seamless transition in terms of handling that with the last stuff. It's a, it's a lift for, but she's very capable of it.
Is she promoting the Dean's division, or is she acting?
No, they're basically the same in terms of, um, job, job description, in terms of costs, the salary, salary. They're the same, they're equivalent to drafting and the G I S tech is the same. So, she, she's wearing the G I S hat, but we don't necessarily say it's an interim or...
Right, okay, that makes sense.
Basically a lateral.
Yeah.
And they're very, and I think there's a lot of stuff in the G I S that we haven't utilized, the power of the G I S, and so, I hope this is a good opportunity to make some improvements in terms of all the information, how we use it as a very big tool for the future. Okay, last thing. Again, because of our lighter C I P program this year, um, I want to talk a little bit about some of the goals we have for twenty twenty-two. I'll kind of go through these here quickly. Uh, we've got our detailed specifications that have been, that haven't been addressed in quite some time, uh, so we're, we're going to be reviewing those and making improvements and changes to the, for the standard details where the specifications, which is pretty dry stuff to do, but it's things that need to be done. So, that'll be one of the things we do this time. Uh, also, we're going to develop and implement the contractor pre-qualification process. So, we will then just have a list of contractors. Anytime a project comes available, the whole list will just get the email, and they can come with the plans if they want to do it, if they can do that. Currently, we don't have that list, and we talked about that before, uh, developing a list, so we're going to process that. Uh, we're going to start back up the project review committee with senior staff, uh, so we can start working on our five-year C I P and start to do all the prioritization and those things that we talked about earlier, so we can get those scores and get that put up and have a good five-year program that we can, that we can utilize for the future for planning as well as for rates, et cetera, so... Uh, then we're going to take some policies, we're bringing one of those tomorrow, but, uh, tools and ranks, temporary service locations, which we're currently on hold, for direction for the board. We'll come back to have that discussion, as well as the D F W L Es. Uh, the other one is the pipeline reimbursement program, which you guys probably don't do it specifically, but that's another program which basically looks at, at folks having to pay the fair share of a pipeline that we installed and how we come up with that cost, and that was a lot of ambiguity in that program, and how we, how we use it. So, anyway, those three things we'll be bringing back to the board. Obviously, Plant for Water, you're going to cover, uh, uh, technical aspects for the Plant for Water. It's going to be heavy this summer. Uh, the R P for the consultant is on the street, on the website yesterday. So, we're looking forward to that, get somebody on board, hopefully bring the first, probably the first board meeting in March. We'll bring that for, for approval with the consultant. Capacity charge update, two thousand fourteen, the last time we did that, uh, so we need to do an update on the capacity charge study. So, we'll see on that this year as well. We talked about Colby encroachments, and just some improvements to the project status and our website update. It's not necessarily all that good information in some of that, so we want to clean that up, make it ever look better tool for the board.
What's your gut feeling on capacity charge, charges up? They're going to be increased, or what's your gut?
I've never seen them go down.
Well, I mean, I understand, but there, there's a lot of pushback out there right now.
I think it's adjusted annually by the E N R. We have been adjusting it.
Yeah.
That's good.
I mean, costs aren't going, are coming down, but...
Yeah.
There's some people not signing up because they can't afford it.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I had to read the T Leaks, I'd say it's going to increase that.
Yeah, no, I understand, I...
So, that'll be one we'll, we'll prepare and bring over to the board.
Do we have a financing component to that?
Yeah, it's basically what that is, right? It's...
It's the D F W L A, it's what we have, right?
Well, but no, just individuals.
Oh, individuals. Well, currently, we do have, uh, I think it's a seven year, seven? There's a, there's a, there's a process which somebody comes in and requests service, they can actually finance a portion of the capacity, I believe, too.
They can't. And they get charged the interest rate at, no, it's twenty.
Ten years or something, does that affect?
It was, what, it's twenty, is it seven? That was twenty.
It's twenty.
Yeah, it's twenty years. Um, the interest rate is set at least, which is extremely low right now, and the, when they sell, it has to be essentially paid off if it's not paid off in full. Yeah, we need to talk, this is a good topic for the board to talk about. It's probably not the best idea to do this, of loaning public funds for private purposes like that.
So, we are still doing this, still policy though.
Is it a policy?
It's a policy. Yeah, it's in the rules and regulations, it's in the rules and regulations, it's an ongoing program. Recent action on the program has been limited to, um, what is that called, subordinating when you, when they go out and get a second mortgage or something?
Right.
Yeah, um...
We're kind of making them two different programs. Yeah, we are.
Well, that was, that was the question.
That was my question about new hookups.
It was new hookups for single residential.
Single residential. Subordination and the higher amounts are for DFWLE programs. We offer individual loan programs for those that are just doing an individual connection. I'll get those numbers for you, they're much less than the DFWLE.
That's what the reason why loanation was. Yeah, and we should have this larger conversation, larger context when we talk about the program. We just pulled some data on it.
And on the, um, contractor pre-qualification process, I know there's, um, policy, I think it's 38, the procurement policy discusses you know, contracting, all of that, as well as procurement, purchasing, um, things.
Yes.
That will pass that or whatever. So that I would think would be folded into.
And so currently, as of the policy draft form, I probably, just looking at the calendar, possibly bring it to the board workshop on February 8th. It's real close, but I do want staff to take a look at it. So it's broken down into materials and supplies, um, general services, professional services, and then construction projects.
Doug, a question, uh, you mentioned the Plan for Water, um, consulting or, you know, process. So who is on that selection committee for the, I mean, we, we ultimately support that, right? But, I mean, you have a, a group that's vetting and interviewing and who is that?
Yeah, so right now it consists of staff and sort of three outside partners, which is Tracy Sheehan, Melinda Booth, and Barbara Marshall. So, um, we are kind of considering whether we need one additional outside member and then, you know, there will be staff on the committee. And then once the committee comes up with a recommendation, that'll be proposed to the board for final consideration.
Consider agriculture.
Yeah.
I thought we were gonna.
We have been talking to agriculture, we haven't had anybody volunteer to serve on kind of the review committee, but I, I do.
Yeah, you should be.
Yeah, we, we can get, and more the merrier really.
Well, I have one tonight for you.
Okay, yeah, no problem. We're actually gonna talk about that at the Plan for Water.
Okay.
Cool.
And five, we have five minutes.
Yep, we're almost done. So last one is just improvements to our processes. There's different things that we need to clean up and deal with, um, internally, at least that's my opinion and as an engineering manager. We can move forward against this way, we just say it. Project builder, some of those things, standardization, you know, how we, who reviews it, how we review it. You know, doing some design deliverables to get a, to understand why we're doing the project, what it's about, what's the anticipation. Then getting review and buy-off from the department so that we can move forward with actual design. It's really simple and straightforward and everybody's on the same page. And that the, the product that we present and how we put it together means if somebody's not there, somebody else can easily pick it up and see all the, and see what's going on. Some of those types of things we've been lacking in the past, but to get a little more, uh,
Would that be considered as like a feasibility study or a?
Yeah, so it's almost like a DDR, like, like a basis of design report, but maybe not quite a full-blown one that you would typically see a consultant necessarily make, but
Depends on the complexity of the, of the project being proposed. If it's something fairly simple, you know, it'd be a fairly simple, straightforward, one-page or if it's something.
Yeah, right, yeah, if it's something big, then, right. Absolutely.
Important to look at a problem holistically and see what were the options, what, what could we be to fix it and why is this the solution?
It is, and some of that discussion, you know, for us is do this and replace the, maybe do this, which gets you another 10 or 15 million dollars, and if that makes sense, do that in short term. Push that off in terms of longer-term stuff. It's always just gonna be project-specific.
Because we inherited a lot of very mishmashed systems and if we just say, well, this part broke, let's fix it. Well, sometimes you need to take a step back and make it work more.
Other than that, I think the big thanks to Joanna to put this together for me.
Yeah.
Your job, yep. Any other final questions?
I just appreciate the, um, acknowledging the breadth of the work that you're doing within the engineering team uh, and calling out the right-of-way people, GIS, you know, because sometimes the people in, doing that kind of work are not showcased. And so it's nice that you acknowledge them in that presentation. I also appreciate that, given the lighter load that you have for the CIP, uh, and your project list, that you're working on really important things that oftentimes fall to the wayside because you're so busy with the day-to-day. So I, I really appreciate the energy that you'll be putting into that. And I think it'll make it a stronger, or, you know, help it to be a stronger organization.
Yeah. Amen.
As anyone who's hoping to comment or ask a question at this time for engineering update today, start on your phone. Hey. Dean Dunn, thank you very much, Doug.
Thank you.
Great presentation. We will take a really short, quick break before we launch into the next one.
Oh, the water tenders.
I'm hoping to roll back out. We are live now. If anyone can bring their plane back on.
Okay, we're back in session. Next item, safe meeting is the plan for water. Sorry, I lost what I was gonna say. Plan for Water Workshop, Water Service Area Overview. And once again, if you'd like to comment or ask a question anytime, star nine on your phone, we'll save questions as we go, or comments. And with that, Mr. Chip.
Good afternoon, board, staff, public, Chip Close, Water Operations Manager. And like we have a Zoom, get a slide presentation, we'll get that adjusted here in just a second.
While we're adjusting that, do we want to touch basis on the work that's been done since the last meeting?
Yes, I meant to ask that.
Okay. While we're getting the presentation figured out.
And the, yeah, just touch on the overview.
Sure. So, as the board is aware, we did add the additional stage for watersheds, so that will be the new stage three. That will occur after water rights. So, water rights is our next official stage that starts in the February timeframe. As Mr. Roderick noted in our previous item, we did release the request for a proposal for the Plan for Water modeling effort. And we do have a review team for the consultants that consists of internal staff members as well as external partners. Based upon the board's feedback, we are gonna do a little bit more work to reach out to the agricultural committee to see if any of them would like to participate on the consultant review committee. For selecting the proposal that we would then recommend to the board for consideration of a contract for the modeling effort. Just so nobody gets any sticker shock, I do expect the modeling to be fairly expensive. It is quite extensive, certainly in consideration of the amount of public meetings and comment responses and engaging with the community, so I don't want anyone to have a ton of sticker shock. You know, it definitely, it will definitely be, you know, my, if I had to guess, around 650 range. So, that should be coming. And once we have that closed, Doug, was February 10th? So, the time period for consultants to submit their selection was February 10th, and then we hope, we're trying to get an item to the board for approval of the contract, second meeting in February?
First one in March.
First one in March. Second meeting, we'll try for second meeting in February, probably be a little bit tight. And we did reserve the right to do interviews of the consultants if needed for the selection criteria, and we also did a real wide blast on the solicitation of proposals. And so, we have joined a couple of services that do issuance of RFPs on a wider scale. Typically, in the past, we have kind of sent them to consultants that we know, so we're kind of trying to push that out much larger to get a larger audience and hopefully a better response. And then, outside of that, was there any questions on the check-ins for the Plan for Water process? We've still been taking comments, any comments we receive during the meetings, then get, they do then get uploaded to the website as part of those meeting documents, so that is continuing to happen. We did send out the RFP to a couple of our partners that we were planning on having participate in the proposal review process, and we did receive comments from, one letter of comments and then one basically thank you, but I don't have any comments. We did respond to the letter of comments that we received. And let's see.
Where, where on the website are those letters that you've received? I, I saw that after every meeting, there's a list of comments that are coming from the meeting with the transcribed response, which is really nice, but then as letters start, I think they'll probably start coming up in in more earnest. Is, where are those on the website?
Greg.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah. Hi, Director Hall, Greg Jones. So, they are on the website. I was gonna, I can make sure, I'll put it in the chat box here, I can, no, we don't have a chat box, sorry, but it is on the Plan for Water website. I'm just pulling it up here to see where they are. We do include them, if you look under Documents. I believe on the far right side of the Plan for Water, you go to the right Documents, and then if you scan all the way to the bottom of that, I believe there is, those letters posted there.
Okay. I don't know, this is maybe a small issue, but the sign-up to be on the mailing list for the Plan for Water is down at the bottom of the page, and I think it's hard to miss any way we could put that at the top of the page or somewhere more central on the page. I've had people email me and say, "I can't find that link." It's on the page, it's just at the very bottom.
Let us look into it. The website is kind of a plug-and-play type thing, so it is somewhat hard to move the buttons, but let me check into that. And then, Chris, we had also committed to having the chat open during the Plan for Water meetings.
Then, the other question I have is just whether or not, and I'm not advocating for it, but just want to throw it out there for discussion, whether it would be valuable to have a board member on that selection committee for the data consultant.
Same thing.
Typically, I do not recommend that for a specific purpose if the particular board member is in conflict with the review committee. It can place staff in a very awkward position of having to not support the board member. Because you, you do have a vote outside, if you have a vote, you know, when it comes to vote. In this particular situation, it's not really a legislative action, so I'm not really concerned from a legal realm, ground-up point of view. When you are doing some type of legislative action, you should not be projecting your vote prior to voting, because especially that's public hearing. You are supposed to listen to public comment, then basically make your decision. In this particular case, I, you know, I've just seen it go sideways many times, but I'm happy to take direction from the board.
Well, just what I was thinking is that this is probably one of the most important decisions that we will make relative to the Plan for Water. I mean, it's among the top 10 certainly, and it's, the, the prior process seemed to be fraught with controversy, and it just seemed that, that having, well, and I, and I hearken it too, when Ricky and I were on the Labor Committee with Greg and Jana, that really helped provide a, kind of to me, a bridge between that process and the board. So, that's why I thought we might kind of consider it. I mean, I'm not wedded to it either, but I just think, I hate to see, feeling, anyone on the board feeling like they didn't have adequate information to get it, make a decision. And I think if there's someone who has more of an interest, that they potentially could be a valuable participant in that process.
I think we all have an interest.
We do all have an interest, and I, I don't, I just, I agree with both of you. But thinking, if you could go through the process for us, Jennifer, will there be, will the committee select three or one?
No, staff will make, the committee will make a selection.
Selection.
Yeah, staff will make a recommendation that hopefully aligns with the committee, and then the board has the ultimate say. You all have a single vote, yeah.
But we don't have the context that's, that's, you know, so we, I mean, it's kind of like, I mean, I'm gonna, my, my belief is that I'm gonna trust the management to, to decision. How would I have any other context?
Are they, are these videoed, and so we could watch it, the procedure?
You know, if you would like, the board could review the proposals and select. I mean, if that, if that's what we're getting at, because if, if one, if, what is essentially being said is that the board would trust the input from a board member more than what would be provided by staff and through the staff report. If that's the case, then I really would recommend that the board review the proposals and look at them.
You know, I don't hear that, that the board would trust one more.
Like, you're all gonna get context from one more, that's where my concern comes.
That's the problem.
Is if there's a hybrid where you have staff and the community input about, okay, here's our top three maybe, and then the board could then, the full board could review those top three with a report from you about why these are the top three, or five, or however it falls, or maybe, so that we get context before we have to make a decision. And everybody gets.
I have, I have done a lot of consultant selections for very, very, very large projects. I've never seen it done that way. And one of my concerns is that when consultants are looking at these meetings and watching them, as being a former consultant, I'm going to start escalating my price, understanding the involvement of what is gonna go on from the political side of the house. And so, I, it is totally up to the board. If you want to do that, I don't recommend you do that, but we're more than happy to do it.
Can, can we attend the meetings and just sit in the back and observe?
I don't, I don't think that's, that's a great idea.
Oh, I know you would.
I, I, you got, we can do however you, you select.
But we, we're not gonna participate, just sit back and take, you know, take notes.
Watch it tomorrow.
I think, I think there's two issues going on here, and I, I agree with, first off, we're all new board members, I mean, relative, as far as this process, and this is a big one. And Karen mentioned the controversy that surrounded the last attempt at this. I think it'd be helpful to discuss some of those things, what those things are, whether they're pertinent to having a board member there or not. And I, right now, I think they are, okay? I don't disagree with the controversy part, and certainly the cost is, I mean, we flipped out the first meeting.
Yes, we did.
And now, and now we're gonna be back to the same amount of money, so.
Yeah, but we'll have a quality product, and we'll be.
And we will have, I hope we have a quality.
Well, and plus, what we get at the end is way more than what.
Right.
That was just a consultant to find a consultant.
So, back to the controversial part, the controversial part is tweak all as, in that timeframe.
Well, sorry. No, I'm sorry, Chris, I.
Go ahead.
I, I provided a solution to, or a potential solution to what I perceive to be a potential problem on down the line, so I'm, I'm not at all wedded to it. But what I don't want to have is to have, here's one, here's the option for you, and that's it. Because I, I just think that's not gonna sit well with this board. And so, Ricky provided a solution, which is we see three alternatives.
Your top three, or something?
Yeah, and, and have, you know, kind of pros and cons, yeah.
We, yeah, I just, my, my response is only coming from having been a consultant. I, any consultant watching this right now, I mean, the price is going up and up and up.
Why?
Because that, it seems to be that there's gonna be a lot of political involvement in something that is not going to be based off of the criteria that's just included in the RFP, that is then just scored by what should be a fairly neutral party, right? I was hoping to address some of these concerns, including outside individuals, but if we're wanting to escalate the, you know, bring the top three forward, I, we can do that. I have not really seen, we can do interviews, and you can do that. I, I, as a consultant, I don't know that I would, I would propose on it.
I, you know, I'm fine with an objective, here's the proposal.
Yeah.
I just want to have all the background information, and that does, I mean, that's, that could be a video of the meetings that I watch and hear everybody's input. I think just being a little closer to the raw data gives me more of a, a foundation to make a decision.
Well, that's why I was thinking, if you presented, not that we'd have to interview the top three.
No.
If you presented, hey, this, these are the top three, they're all, they all meet the criteria, blah, 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 blah. Here, board, you know, this is, this is our recommendation, this is why we want something A over B or C, and here's the context, just something more, with a little more background and meat to it, rather than, here's our recommendation.
Right. I, I think there's gonna be, I think the thing, Jennifer, that you don't see that we feel, you're gonna get pressure out in the community as to why you picked who you picked, and if there's only one option presented, we picked who they recommended. That's not really a good response on part of us.
Part of us, yeah. So, when the staff reports are written, there are, the consultants will be ranked in the order that the committee ranks them in. And so, from there, it'd be easy to see the top three, and then we can go through an analysis of each of the three.
Right.
As the committee agree, you know.
Right, and then you make recommendations.
Right, the reasonings, of course, that's, we could, we can provide the comments from the committee members, that's easy to do as well.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's suggesting that, that the consultants have to come in and do a dog and pony show for us, or that we're really second guessing the recommendation of the committee, but we have to have the foundation broader than just one consultant. Otherwise, we're at the grocery store saying, "Why did you pick that group?" Well, because that's who they presented, and that's not a good answer.
Yeah, I guess, I'm coming from, I, I don't understand how that's, we would normally, with this item, we would provide all the proposals, all the score sheets, the ranking. Are you just asking for a more in-depth analysis on the top three that were selected and why?
Perhaps.
Yeah.
We can do, we can sort of see where it shakes out, right?
We can do that, for sure.
Even if you just videotape the meeting, so we could remotely watch and follow the proceeding.
Oh, God, I wouldn't do that. I, that's too much time, really.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't know. I'm not interested in looking at all that. I'm sort of torn in the middle of this, but I'm leaning towards.
Well, I think we're gonna have to trust.
Yes, we do.
Well, I absolutely trust. It's not a question of trust, it's a question of how we answer the questions out in the world.
Right, right.
Right, so.
Decision is our decision.
And if it was a less controversial topic, I wouldn't worry about it. But this is going to get scrutiny in the committee, in the community, and it's, and it's not, and having, I think having Circle and the other representatives is fantastic, but we're still gonna get questioned. And we, and we have to be able to answer the questions more than, we got one, we got the recommendation from the committee, and that's what we accepted it, I, I think. That I would prefer. But what you've described is, you would provide a more detailed summary of process, of the, of the scoring, and how things in the top three were so, you know, who came to the top, and why you're making the recommendation you're recommend, you're making. I think that's fine.
Why don't we do this? Why don't I write down a proposed process, and, and then we bring it back, so you can weigh in on it? And like I said, if, if the board wants to, we could do that too, that is an okay thing, we can do whatever we want. If we want to have interviews in front of the board, but I just, my concern is coming from, on the street, the, the sentiment is that this is going to be a very difficult project to be successful at. And so, from the standpoint that we've already indicated, we don't want one particular consulting firm to even propose or be considered. We're, consultants, it's a, it's a, a very expensive proposal to put together, so that's gonna limit the people who are going to propose on it anyway. There is a lot of time and background effort needed, so we're limiting from that. People are already hearing, we're starting, we don't want this consultant, who may or may, you know, justified or not, you know, you have to look at it from a business sense, so we're, we're limiting our pool of people who are going to propose. I'm just a little bit concerned of the perception from the consulting committee communities, just coming from a consulting background. Because this is, this is a conversation as a consultant you would have long in heart as to whether, do you want to propose, can you be successful in the project, and are you going to ruin your firm's reputation doing it?
That's interesting. My experience with consultants proposing is that they want to propose to the decision-makers, they want to propose to the people that are actually gonna decide whether they're gonna be accepted or not.
So, most of the time, which, and I, I used to write proposals when I was a consultant, most of the time, you do not go before a governing body, I've never seen that before. I have seen, in one situation I can think of, it was with an investment advisor, we did go before and have the investment advisors do interviews in front of a larger committee than community members, and I believe one council member.
You know, when we put out the RFP to find a executive head hunting, executive consultant, we, you know, Chris and I, I think it was just Chris and I, at that moment, we interviewed everybody who submitted, and we come in here and sit down and talk.
When we were the committee, though.
When we were the committee.
And that's normal for executive recruitment, or general managers, or city manager, because they, they're recruiters working for you.
Yeah, that's true. I don't know, let's just see what we got.
So, why don't we, so we're not hearing, we want a more in-depth process that's spelled out, so we can all have a higher comfort level.
There you go.
Okay, and then we can work, start, continue to flush this through the text.
Amen.
Thank you, thank you.
And the Q and A is working? I do a test.
You mean the chat?
The chat.
A chat, chat Q and A.
And that's your chat? Okay, perfect.
Did you want to announce that?
Yes, the, the chat is working for anybody who would like to use it. Was there anything else before we move off this topic? So, we, we are going to take a look at the button on the bottom, the sign-up for the Plan for Water. We are going to also, if, whether or not we can move it so it's easier to be seen, and then we are going to make sure we have a good spot for comment, public comments received via letter that aren't necessarily associated with the meeting, so easier to find. And then, we're gonna put up forward a framework for review of the.
And what was, what was the timeframe for that, for the consultant again, coming on board?
So, the, the item is, yeah, the request for proposals is open until February 10th, and then it would be coming forward at the first meeting in March. So, we can bring an item back to the board regarding the proposal review either January 26th or February 9th.
Generally, having two Plan for Water meetings per month.
Yes.
Yeah.
We can actually bring it back February, it'd be easy to do.
I have a question on the, the proposal that triggered, the proposals aren't due until February 10th.
Correct.
But they can't ask any questions, and that's a Thursday, I would, and they can't ask any questions beyond February 6th, which is the previous Friday?
Yeah, and that's normal. It's normal, because if a question requires an addendum to the RFP, you have to give the entire group of proposers an opportunity to respond to the RFP. So, say somebody asked us a question, it was fundamentally changed something we were asking for, made, took a clarification, you want to make sure that the rest of the people who are closing have time to react to the response to the question, if it, in the incident that it did result in that significant change. So, you usually, that's what you would usually see, is questions cut off about a week early.
And then.
All right, so we have a couple of opportunities to bring back, a framework for review prior to the meeting, so we will put it in where it kind of fits.
The, the proposal also said, this is for professional services, intellectual property mostly, and it says that cost is going to be a component. What usually to professional services, based on scale, you know, the proposal, and cost is not part of that, but how are we gonna determine, we don't want the rock-bottom barrel cheapest.
And we do go, we.
Intellectual property.
It's only, that's why, it's only 10% of the scoring, and I have the same concerns as well. So, a lot of times what you'll see is in the request for proposal, there will be a scoring criteria, it could be experience, the approach to the work, public outreach, experiences with NGOs, whatever, I mean, they each have a point. And then, the cost can't be an overriding consideration over all of that, it can only be a component or, or part of a consideration of the selection.
And you, they establish 10%.
Correct, it was, it was in the RFP, wasn't it?
It was 10%, and we don't, we keep that separate and sealed, so all the people reviewing the proposals have no idea what the costs are, so they can't be skewed in their, after it's all done, then we take it, add the 10%, and then we adjust the score based on that. So, this doesn't influence anybody.
Yeah, 'cause you're, you're correct, you shouldn't be selecting professional services out, based on the lowest price, especially with the complex projects like that.
Yeah, it is.
Can we have a public comment?
All right, let's see.
My text, and then one person.
Anonymous attendee, there is the standard practice for professional consultant, consultants contracting for state agencies. Yes, that's correct. I'm not sure if that's the question, it posted the question, but that is a correct statement.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Jeff, you're on it.
I'm on it, yeah.
You're on it.
Wow.
A little, little sidetracked there. It's good. We always have business.
And I got it.
There's just one quick question before the chat, before we get started. Will the chat Q and A be saved in the public record of the meeting? The chat itself is not saved, but the comments are included in the chat, are recorded and then responded to in the meeting notes for the meeting, they're posted on the website.
Okay. I'll reiterate, if anybody'd like to comment or ask a question anytime during the presentation, just jump right in.
Yep. As the slide mentions, if you're a Zoom attendee, raise your hand on the app or press star nine on your phone, wait for us to call on you, and you'll be able to join in the conversation. And I do have to. Okay, so, welcome to workshop number three, topic number two. Glad to be here this afternoon. If you remember from our first workshop, we talked about NID lands and how they're basically divided into two sections. We have our watershed area lands, and that is operated and maintained by our hydroelectric division. That's the area where we get most of our watershed collection into our larger reservoirs. However, today, we're gonna be talking more about the service area land, and that's the land where NID provides water delivery for consumptive use to our customer base, and that is operated and maintained by our water division. And if you attended the last workshop, this map should look familiar to you, but basically, in the first workshop, we covered the area on the right-hand side of the screen in pink, that is our mountain division of the watershed collection area. This afternoon, we'll be talking about the area that's shaded in orange, and basically, that is the area that our water rights allow us to provide water service to our customer base in that area. There's one little anomaly off to the left, dark, bless you, the dark and flat shaded area, that is the railroad commission area where we, there are portions of Yuba County with our water rights as well. So, the two halves of NID, as you can see, I've read out the, the section we talked about in the workshop number one. Today, we're gonna talk about the water distribution service area. The details on that is basically, it's 287,000 acres of land, and as I mentioned, it's the land included within our water rights for consumptive use. It includes roughly 500 miles of canal, 6,500 raw water customers, eight treatment plants, six of which are NID, one is City of Grass Valley, one is City of Nevada City, 400 miles of treated water pipelines, more than 19,600 treated water connections, and 5,520 additional connections, which are the city connections I mentioned a minute ago, so quite a few connections there. And we utilize roughly 150,000 acre feet a year to supply our consumptive use area. Now, again, a little bit of quick review for you. At the first workshop, we discussed where our watershed lands are and where we collect these waters from. It includes, like, Milton and Jackson Meadows and Bowman, and we take those waters and we transfer them over into the Eugene Spalding Reservoir, and from there, we have a, a number of different ways to get water down into our system. Essentially, the two main channels we utilize is, we take water from Spalding, place it in the South Yuba Canal, and transfer those waters into the Deer Creek Watershed, and then go into Scott's Flat Reservoir, that's one major artery. The other is the Drum Canal, where we transfer water through the Drum System and into the Bear River and into Rollins, that's the second major artery, and that's where we're gonna jump off today. We're gonna start with the Deer Creek System out of Scott. Now, you look at this and you go, "Oh, my gosh." Look at all those colors, look at all those lines, and yes, it's a very complicated system. And this is just half of it. This is the Deer Creek System. What you're gonna see on this map is that every different color is a different diversion from a natural water course. We're gonna walk through these individually, rather rapidly, but at least we're gonna try to get through it. We do have 80 slides, and we're trying to get through all of them. So, that's the Deer Creek System. We'll also review the Bear River System. This is the water that comes out of the Bear River and Rollins and Comby, and you can see all the canals it feeds as well. So, then, you would think, well, let's draw this in a simple format, in a schematic that we can all easily understand, but honestly, when you do that, it just gets worse. So, it's a very complex and complicated system. So it's a very complex and complicated system. But we're going to do our best to walk you through it, and obviously, as questions come up, we will answer them.
This represents about 45% of the district's consumptive use?
As, in relation to.
Fifty-five percent.
This is all of our consumptive use.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, the Deer Creek System's about 45%, Bear River.
Yes, we will get into that in a little bit of detail. It varies from year to year based on hydrology and the conditions, but yes, pretty close. We'll get into that, it's in one of the future slides here. Okay, so, diving down a little bit deeper, the Deer Creek System is the primary supply to Nevada County and as, as well as Yuba County. In 2019, we supplied roughly 53,000 acre feet that supplied 75 canals, which represents roughly 3,315 raw water customers, 3,000 summers, 315 winter customers. Six potable water treatment plants, which supplies 18,260 treated water connections for a total population of 52,000 people, so a pretty large number there. The Bear River System actually uses more water, but essentially has less treated water connections and more raw water connections. Bear River System is the primary supply to Blaster County. In 2019, we diverted 87,500 acre feet. So Rich, there's kind of a comparison for you. In 2019, it was 87,500 in Blaster County versus 53,000 in Nevada County. Generally speaking, those numbers are usually a little bit closer, but for whatever reason, this is how it panned out in 2019. The Bear River System supports two potable water treatment plants, being Lake of the Pines and North Auburn. But we also have the ability to help out some of our neighbors in PCWA and even P. Jenny a little bit. So we'll touch on that a little bit later in the slide as well. That supplies roughly 5,000 treated water connections or a population of 15,000 people. That's split. Now, we'll get into each diversion in a little bit more detail for you. This is the Deer Creek Cascade Canal diversion. This is looking upstream at our diversion point. You can see the concrete structure there, the broad crest, broad crest of years. And that's where we divert our supplies for the Cascade Canal. Now, in the earlier workshops, I told you how basically we send all of our South Yuba Canal water into Scott's Flat. And that's true, however, in this particular map, you can see on the upper right-hand portion of your screen, right up there. Our diversions start actually for this canal above Scott's Flat. So we transport that water from Spalding into the South Yuba Canal and go straight into the Deer Creek Powerhouse. It gets power generated with those flows. And then, a couple hundred yards below that powerhouse, we re-divert these flows, put them into the Cascade Pipeline. The canal itself is supplied via natural Deer Creek watershed flows as well as imported South Yuba Canal flows. The flows are continuously monitored and measured via our SCADA system. And the average flows in 2019 were 32 CFS in the summer and 12.2 CFS in the winter. We do have an in-stream flow requirement at this location. So if you look at where we divert from way up here at the top right-hand part of the screen. We are required to continue to flow water into Deer Creek, all the way into Scott's Flat Reservoir. In the winter months, that's a requirement of about 10 CFS, in the summer, that's about 3 CFS. And ultimately, it's a good thing, it helps keep the creek healthy, but we get to reutilize the water at Scott's Flat and below, so.
Chip, can you talk about what the SCADA system is? So I, I just understand what exactly it does and.
Yes.
How it's managed.
And if you'll, if you'll give me a little patience.
Yeah, absolutely.
A whole section at the end, but we'll talk about that. But essentially, what it is, is it's a, it's an electronic reporting station that sends the data on how much water we're putting into our canal in real time and reporting that back to our headquarters. And I'll give you an example of what that looks like at the end of the slides here.
And it's located at what position?
It's located at the head of each canal. In fact, I don't have it for this one. This one's in a pipe flow meter, so it's not glorious to look at. But most of the other diversion locations, I'm going to show you what our measuring station looks like.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we mentioned the in-stream flow. This particular facility supplies 31 downstream canals, covering a distance of roughly 76 miles. 1,401 summer irrigation waters, customers, 240 winter customers. And is the main source of drinking water supply for Nevada City, Cascade Shores, Alta Sierra, Chicago Park, those general areas. This is what our diversion facility looks like, just upstream of that first picture I showed you where the concrete weir was. This is, the Deer Creek now, our creek itself continues to flow past this facility. We intake our water here through these screens. Now, because this goes into a, a pipe diversion with valves at the end, it cannot take a ton of debris, and you don't want fish and other things in there. So this screen helps to protect our facility. There are automatic timers and they self-clean.
I was going to ask my question, if they're automatic.
Yeah.
They got electric motors on.
And it's a good thing too, because this is a very remote location. Next slide here shows you kind of the details. If we went through every single canal tonight, we'd be here all night long. So I just put together these little spreadsheets that kind of give you an overview. This shows you all the different canals that the Cascade diversion supports. Essentially, the total of 31 canals, all in length is a little over 76 miles, and there's a breakdown of the customers. If you look at this particular one, the Chicago Park Canal, at 8.2 miles and 217 summer customers is one of your biggest. Along with the Rattlesnake, which is 10.25 miles and 173 customers, so it's your biggest supply chain there.
So Chip, how, in this, you might want to defer this question to a different time, which is fine. But I'm, in looking at both this presentation and then for the Bear System. I see that there's instances where we're providing winter water in canals where it looks like we have, like, for instance, the, it happens to be the Meyer Beer Wagon pipe. It's, you know, we have 17 summer customers and one winter customer. But, I mean, that might not be the best example, which, Chicago Park, we have 217 summer and 35 winter. So it, it seems that, that given you have to provide enough flow to, to support the pressure and the, you know, the flow going through the miners' box.
Yep.
How do we decide what makes sense for that winter water?
So generally.
My winter water.
Oh, goodbye.
So generally speaking, winter water.
Sorry, Chris.
Provided at locations where there's no other alternative for these folks to have water at their facilities in their home. They don't use it in the house for cooking or drinking, but they use it for other items like flushing toilets, taking showers and things like that. That's how winter water really started. We've made some marked improvements with expanding of the distribution systems and whatnot, so these numbers are continually going down. I will say, on certain canals where we only have one or two winter water customers, we've pretty much just frozen that. And as those customers come off, we will not be supplying winter water in the future. It's not the most efficient use of our winter water.
Right.
Given that, it takes sometimes way more, put in the canal system, just to get to the one customer who's six miles down the canal, it's not the most efficient use. So, to briefly answer the question, we don't expand the services on canals that are very limited, and we don't offer this on canals that are already at zero. It's not a new service we're going to offer in the future. And as constructed conveyances go away, those are the people who use this in the home, we're going to start cutting those back where we can.
Follow up your question, because I haven't kind of the other side of this too, the, the cost benefit ratio of providing those winter services. If we're talking mostly houses, there are a few livestock people, but is there a way to, to measure the cost of, the cost of keeping those canals?
Yeah, that's a great question, and you'll see in our rules and regs and our rates, that winter water actually costs more. And the reason being is it takes a lot more staff and man hours to run these canals during storm events. Basically, it's all hands onboard, and we go out and gut canals and put them all back together. Every storm, we're doing this, so it's more costly to run the system during the winter months.
For a few.
Are we recovering, or not a large number of customers?
Are we recovering the cost?
We are, I, I think, well, yeah, to a certain extent, right? There's a, there's a level of subsidy in all of our rates, but for the most part, the offset helps recover some of that.
Yeah.
So the one that jumps out is the Upper GV. Almost a mile long, one customer, summer and winter.
Yes, so this is a leftover, the Upper Grass Valley Canal used to be the main source of supply for the Elizabeth George Water Treatment Plant. That has now been piped, and we have asked most of those customers to transfer off of that canal. There was one customer left who wasn't able to do so financially. We look forward to reaching out to them in the future, maybe working with them somehow or another to basically be able to abandon this facility.
I mean, it might save us money.
Yes.
Yeah.
It does, it, it just seems like this whole topic area begs further discussion. You know, I'm sure this isn't the time, but it, it, you know.
Winter water.
Wow.
Well, I'll tell you though, when we do shut off the system in the winter due to storms, we get a lot of calls. So people are, are very accustomed to receiving this winter water and truly count on it.
We've called three times.
So for those that are accustomed to it and have gotten this service basically.
Sure, absolutely.
Yet it.
Yep.
Do we have a good breakdown of the folks that use the winter water only for outdoor water use versus any in-home use?
Yeah, we can give more detail on that, I can bring that back. We do have a list of everybody who's constructed conveyance, and then, and roughly about, I'll check, it was around that.
It's addressing the constructive conveyance issue is probably the worst.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So being a, a winter water customer myself, so, so one of the main reasons we buy the winter water is for the shoulder season. If it's some season will be hot between October 15th and December, or if it's some season will be hot January to March.
And it bailed out the original guy at my place.
We have that water, so it's not because we use it in the winter when it's storming and pouring rain, it's because we want that on the shoulder season.
We have one question. We have one question in the chat, I think it might be more relevant to the next slide, but I think we're moving on to the next one. How many, what's the percentage of treated water customers that are metered? Do we have any un-metered treated water?
We'll get to that at the end, but all treated water customers are metered.
That was a state requirement, and I don't know what was that, such, eight years ago or something. And then, there's a follow-up question, what percentage of each subsystem do treated water customers consume? I don't, do we know the answer to that off?
Uh, I don't off the top of my head, but you, you'll be able to see the numbers as we walk through here, and you'll see it's, it's a very low number in relation.
I think I have another question hiding down here when I can. There we go.
Okay, so moving on, so we're still in the Cascade Canal System, and I mentioned it supports a number of drinking water treatment plants, we'll go through those real quickly. So the first one is our Elizabeth George Water Treatment Plant. It's our largest capacity plant at 18 million gallons a day of capacity. It serves 6,342 connections, which is an equivalent to a population of 18,000. It has 153 miles of treated water pipeline, it's pretty big. And 60 different pressure zones, definitely more than that. But essentially, because we live in the topography we do where hills go up and down and up and down. We have to, here at NID, re-regulate the pressure every time the water goes up and down a hill to ensure we're not overpressuring the water in people's homes. So that's, you'll see that in each one of these systems, we have a number of these pressure regulating stations. This particular system is intertwined with Loma Rica, the City of Nevada City, and the City of Grass Valley. So if any one of those systems should get in a pinch, we can help out and water across, it's very good.
These are out of district customers that have, I guess, just to tie with your neighboring district.
No, well, so, Loma Rica is a NID facility.
So I understand the City of Grass Valley.
City of Grass Valley and City of Nevada City, yes, our, our outside district. But those are both interconnected, they are interconnected. We don't normally supply them water this way. The only time we open up that inter-type connection is if they have an emergency or maintenance they need to do, we'll help them out. And we do available for that use. In 2013, the Elizabeth George System was combined with the Cascade Shore System. So on a map, this is what that facility looks like, all the four colors, lines are our treated water pipelines. And you can see kind of off to the right-hand side up here next to Scott's Flat Reservoir, that is Cascade Shores. We folded that out and followed all together. Essentially, Elizabeth George supplies most of Nevada City area, all of the Grass Valley area, and the Cascade Shores area.
So water runs uphill there?
Pressure of water.
Electricity line. I did not include how many pump stations and tanks we have, but.
That was, I never knew that.
There you go.
Way. Now we pump. Pumping that water up there.
It actually, so the Elizabeth George Treatment Plant is about halfway up Banner Mountain, it uses gravity to push the water through the plant. And then we pump it back up to the top of Banner Mountain to get it into Cascade Shore.
Oh, really?
And we could put a proposed approved project down to Lake Wildwood?
We'll get to that, and that left-hand section right here is the way it would head down towards Lake Wildwood if the VEP line were to move on. And I will say, the pump stations and all of that, it's, I'm very thankful that the district has invested in generators, that those, these facilities, we had over 17 generators running. No again, that we experienced last.
Job well done.
So, yeah, thank you for, staff and the, and the propane, local propane company worked hard with us to make sure those things kept running, were too great. All right, the next system is the Loma Rica Water Treatment Plant, 8.3 million gallons a day capacity, roughly 5,000 connections, prevalent to basically 14,000 people. 120 miles of pipeline, over 30 different pressure zones, and this particular facility is intertwined with the Lake of the Pines Drinking Water System. You can see here on the map, the lines in yellow is basically where our treated water pipelines run. The right-hand side of the screen basically shows that this is through the Chicago Park area, all the way down to, basically where the Chicago Park store is. And then, the other side of this, running down Highway 49, is all of Alta Sierra. You can see all the, the closely knit lines through there that is Alta Sierra. You see this one line running down to the bottom of the screen? That is our inter-type with Lake of the Pines, believe it or not, that line continues to go down all the way into LOPE.
How many vials is that?
Uh, it's a long way, I don't have that number off the top of my head. But essentially, if you follow the water, it starts all the way up at the airport, and takes it all the way down into Lake of the Pines, it's pretty impressive.
So, there were some comments by people living in Alta Sierra that they didn't have electricity, but NID was supplying water. And it really helped.
Yeah.
Big time.
It's tough to be without power for 14 days and have no water.
Yeah.
It just leaves. So Chip, I have a question about both in the Loma Rica and the E. George. When you say, in, what do you, Loma Rica, we've got 8.3 million gallons, serving 5,000 connections.
Yes.
Does the capacity of 8.3 million gallons transfer to how many other connections we could add? Is there a number that, that the total that we could serve with that plant is X?
That, that's a great question. So 8.3 is the maximum capacity of the facility. Are we even close to that? The answer is no, and I, I don't know the number off the top of my head. We're, we're only about currently serving, I'd want to say somewhere around 4 MGD in peak summertime flows. But we have a lot more room to grow for design and expansion purposes. Each connection, we reserve a capacity of 1,250 gallons per day for each connection.
So that would be, and that's max peak day, so that would be 6,640 connections.
More connections.
Yeah, but it's important to understand that max peak day, you know.
Yeah, no, we don't necessarily want to get there, but I was trying to just understand the scale, so.
You have quite a bit, you can probably.
Yeah, and then E. George with 18 million.
Expandable to 24.
Well, and so, you know, it's serving 6,300 connections versus Loma Rica's 5,000 connections.
Right.
So it makes me feel like E. George has a lot more capacity, is that.
It does, so the reason I utilize this picture for Elizabeth George is because it's the most recently upgraded facility. It went from 12 million gallons a day to 18, with an eventual capacity built out of 24 MGD.
Oh, wow.
So there is quite a bit of.
Capacity available.
In E. George. And in fact, in 2020, we produced 1.269 billion gallons of water at Elizabeth George to serve to our customers out.
Wow.
How many is that in MGD? Anyway, we can get that later. But also, E. George is intertwined with Loma Rica, so that means that Loma Rica is intertwined with Lake of the Pines, and that means E. George could actually supply to the Pines. Or even the customers of Lake of the Pines, because there's so much capacity in E. George.
Yes, and that is a fairly new thing. The district actively went out and connected these systems together to increase our reliability and efficiency, and it has been a very useful tool.
And Loma Rica go the other way to Grass Valley and Nevada City?
Yes, and through pumps, but we do have back and forth capability. The one capability we don't really have is Grass Valley and Nevada City. The one capability we don't really have is Grass Valley and Nevada City can't really feed us. We just don't have the capacity to do that.
Why did we increase E-George from twelve to eighteen? Because Ricky pointed out, I mean, when you look at the ratio, eight point three is more than adequate to serve five thousand. So why did we go from twelve to eighteen when we were serving sixty-three hundred?
So Elizabeth George was, is kind of a packaged facility. It was built with compartments. The filters themselves control how much flow you can put through the facility. And it was built, when it was originally constructed, it was built to be expanded. But in order to expand it, you have to build a whole bank of filters at once. And so that means the capacity, to get the most bang for your buck, you had to build the whole facility. So the capacity shot way up. And in fact, the filters themselves right now can handle twenty-four billion gallons a day. Our limiting factor is the sedimentation basin. That's what you see up in here. The state had some concerns with the velocities we were experiencing through there. So in order to get to twenty-four billion gallons a day, we need to build one more sedimentation basin in the future. But that's a long way down the road.
I guess I don't really still understand, why would we go from twelve to eighteen? I don't understand. Seems like twelve was plenty of capacity for the population that we have.
Yes. So this is a tough discussion, right? And it's kind of the same one we're having with Lake Wildwood. In two thousand and eight and a little bit before that, water usage was through the group. I mean, Elizabeth George was hitting max days of eight, ten million gallons a day a season. There was some talks of sending water to the city of Grass Valley, sending water to the city of Nevada City and taking over those systems. So some of the future planning was we really need to address this facility sooner rather than later. So that's why we jumped on, increasing the capacity when we did. We probably could have gotten away with adding a million or two here and there and we would have been fine. But because of the design of the facility and the way it's built and the way it was meant to be expanded, we were rather limited and it had to come in very large blocks.
Okay.
So another rationale was that it's easier to, with the new government regulations and requirements, it's easier to maintain one regional water treatment plant than a whole bunch of independent ones. It's just more cost effective. And the backbone extension program was approved to go to rough and ready Penn Valley and then into Lake Wildwood.
And we did some of that. Like I said, we absorbed Cascade Shore's water treatment plant. When we get to Lake Wildwood, we absorb the Penn Valley Water Treatment Plant. There's one by Altisera was the Kentwood Water Treatment Plant. We have absorbed all of those in and handle them now with the more regional facility.
So Chip, here's the other half of that question that I had. So if E-George has an eighteen up to twenty-four million gallons a day capacity.
Yeah.
Do we have the actual water to serve those, you know, millions of gallons of capacity?
Yeah, so that's a raw water supply discussion, right? And part of why we're here today is to discuss what the future of water supply brings.
Yes, right.
I will say, as a whole, I mentioned earlier in the presentation that the district uses roughly a hundred fifty thousand acre feet of water every year. Our treated water usage is really only about nine to ten thousand acre feet of that every year. So in the grand scheme of things, our treated water use is very, very small in relation to the rest of water usage. And I would imagine at the end of this platform water process, we'll be able to more adequately answer that question that this is how we're going to prioritize water usage in the future.
Well, thank you.
Okay, so let's catch back up to where we were. So we covered the Loma Rica distribution system.
There was one quick question in the chat. Is there an environmental benefit from small volume canal flows like leaks and other habitat opportunities? I think Mr. Feldman is referencing winter water, what we would refer to as nuisance flows. But I don't, well, just from leaks.
That's an interesting one. I can say that whenever we undertake an encasement or piping of the canal, because that's one of the things that we look at, we have to analyze as part of our CEQA documents. It's the effects of encasing a canal and whether it's truly supporting the environment or if it just.
Okay, Mr. Feldman, just clarifying. Small users of summer capacity.
I don't understand that.
Yeah, it's. Yeah, I guess it depends on your perspective of what the natural environment is, whether it's a canal, the constructed conveyance, or is it the natural drainage channel?
Yeah.
Can we use CEQA on all of our canal encasements? Is there a CEQA document for all of them? Usually they're categorically exempt.
It depends. It's a project specific. So there's some small, relatively small encasements that maintenance does because of the small leaking section or something.
That they do and they, this is a project.
Where it's one like Newtown or something along the way. Okay, so for the Loma Rica treated water system, we produced six hundred and sixty million gallons of water in 2020. City of Nevada City has also supplied a portion of their water from Cascade System. City of Nevada City actually has some of their own water rights for the treatment plant. It just doesn't cover them during the peak summer months, so we assist during those times and provide them raw water. They have roughly twelve hundred and fifty-two connections with a population of about three thousand one hundred and fifty. And as I mentioned, they are responsible for their own water service delivery within the city limits.
So Chip, would it be reasonable to say that if outside of Nevada City and Grass Valley, going on to E-George and possibly Lake Wildwood, we wouldn't be hitting up against that capacity that we even have constructed now?
That's correct.
Right. And but we would also then still have the raw water supply because it's already being utilized for those.
Correct. It's already flowing into the facility. Yeah.
Do we have maintenance responsibilities for the city water treatment plant?
We do.
Because you say it's inherited with the E-George system, so.
Intertied.
Intertied.
It's intertied.
Oh, intertied. Sorry, everyone.
Here you go.
I have my own last six to take one down. Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next, made in diversion facility. So this is the Deer Creek system. I label it as the Deer Creek North, just to try to clarify where you can outflow. But essentially here, if you ask anyone at staff level, it's just the Deer Creek system. I'll walk you through this as we go through the next few slides. But what you see on the right-hand side of this slide is that is the Lower Scott's Flat or Deer Creek Diversion Dam as we know it here at NID. And there's two different ways we divert water at this location. In the picture, you can see water coming out about halfway down the dam right here on the right-hand side. That's water we are measuring and then diverting back into Deer Creek itself. That's on the left-hand side of this picture here. From there, Deer Creek Diversion Dam is way up here. So we're putting that water, regulating and putting it back into Deer Creek, flowing it down Deer Creek and diverting it in each one of these green colored canals. That's Keystone Canal Diversion, the Tunnel Canal Diversion and the Keystone Canal Diversion. We'll walk you through each of those. But essentially, again, the water is supplied via the Deer Creek watershed and southbound river canal imported flows. Average flows in the summer of 2019 were thirty-one CFS and the winter was seven CFS. Facility supplies nineteen downstream canals for sixty, producing for about sixty-five miles. Summer irrigation to five hundred ninety-five customers and thirty-two treated water customers is the main source of drink water supply for Lake Wildwood and Smartville. Now just kind of briefly walk you through each diversion. This is the.
Quick question, Chip.
Yeah, sorry.
On a Deer Creek, so you said we utilize Deer Creek to get the water from up here down to Tunnel Canal and to Keystone Canal. Do we do vegetative management in the natural creek area that we utilize?
We really don't. It is a natural waterway that is under the jurisdiction of the state agency. We basically just use it as a conveyance and then take off from there.
That'd be the same for Wolf Creek?
Yeah, I'll get to that here in a second. Good question. So the picture on the right-hand side of your screen is actually Deer Creek itself. You can see that little concrete structure and that's how we direct water toward the inlet, which is on the left here. That's our first canal system that takes off. And it's depicted in this map here with the big red arrow, essentially supplying our Newtown Canal and our Lester Canal. And eventually supplies raw water down around the Lake Wildwood area. Moving on down Deer Creek system, we move to the tunnel system diversion. And in this picture here, you can see the concrete structure across Deer Creek itself. When flows are low, we're basically divert all of the flow into our canal on the right-hand side of the screen right here and then divert the natural flows back into the creek right there. You can kind of see it on the right-hand side of that picture. We put the flows back into Deer Creek so they can be re-diverted down below or continue to supply the natural flows.
Is that where you measure the amount going to Lake Wildwood?
I'll get to that in just a second. That is the, in fact, you ready? There it is. There's the map. There's the, there's where we divert and there's where we measure. So in the background, you can see the dam itself is right back here at the very beginning of the picture up here. Water flows on down and we measure right here at this parcel flow. And this is one of the locations where we measure and send the data back to the imported line.
But this, this doesn't go, tunnel doesn't go to Lake Wildwood, does it? Newtown goes to Lake Wildwood?
So, so let me back up for a second. So what you can see here is the Tunnel Canal diverts from Deer Creek right here. Okay, it flows down into the Ripple Box Canal and the Rex and Quincy. If you'll notice, the end of these canals dead ends right into Squirrel Creek.
Yeah.
Okay? So the tail water flows of those canals go into Squirrel Creek and then we re-divert it and send it on down into the China Union and whatnot. All those canals down there. The Ripple Box itself is a delivery point to Lake Wildwood on the raw water side of the water. So that's how the golf course gets its water and.
Oh, I see, raw water, raw water.
Yeah, there's two different ways they get their water. One is through the Ripple Box. The other is actually the natural flows down into Deer Creek that we put in the creek water. But the treatment plant itself gets its supply from Newtown Canal.
So Chip, can you comment on where you put end of canal measurement?
Yes, when we cover that real quick. As I showed you here in this slide, we have measuring devices at every one of these locations where we pull water off of a natural waterway. We're required to do so by the state and we monitor it in real time and report that to our webpage as well as to the state when they need it. That is occurring in each one of these places where I place the red arrow. We also have canals where, like this one here, the Lester Canal just goes and stops. And you can see on that map, those waters aren't coming back to NID.
Right.
So generally speaking, in most of those locations where the canal stops and we have no further reclaim to that, we try to put a measuring station there. That helps to tell us how much water we're putting into the canal, how much water's coming out at the end of the canal. We then can estimate our customer usage in the middle and get an overall feel for how it's designed. When we get towards the end of the presentation, I'll walk you guys through some measurements and how we do it and show you the real-time action we do throughout the season to measure and monitor so that we don't just put in the total amount everybody's purchasing. We actually regulate the system in real time to try to not waste any extra water. We'll get to that at the end.
What percentage of our canals have the canal measurement?
Well, we don't place the highest priority on canals like the Quincy and whatnot that we know we get right back and then we're going to re-divert. But a very large majority of the ones that don't reclaim back to NID, we do have measuring stations on. And we've been making a hard effort to make those either upgraded or automated to support that.
Okay.
It's a little tough though, because some of them are quite frankly very, very small.
What kind of measurement device is that?
So like in this particular picture here, you see a parcel weir where we're measuring here and I'll get to this at the end. But the very small ones, we generally use a V-notch weir at the end.
So it's the same, okay, same there, same time.
So the last one here on the Deer Creek is the Keystone System. You can't see it in this picture, but essentially where it gets its water from is the dam at the Lake Wildwood Association's lake. There's a little entry structure right here, goes into a pipe and then daylights right along Moody Flat Road and reserves a small number of customers down there at the end.
Chip, we have one quick question from the chat. Is there minimum flow for Squirrel Creek downstream of China Union?
There is.
There is not.
And then a summary. So in this summary breakdown, you can see, I kind of bolded each diversion point so that I can break them out a little bit, but it shows you which canals are fed by which diversion and how many customers that is. I should also note that in these tables, I have an average flow. That was the average flow for 2019. I don't want people to think that's a long-term average flow. That is specific to that year. We do have data and we could crunch the numbers, but basically what I'm showing you tonight is 2019 average flows.
And the Keystone Canal on these, this isn't part of the Cascade?
This is the Deer Creek.
Deer Creek Canal Division. So these canals that were listed on Deer Creek Cascade Canal?
Where are you at? Or I'm not tracking.
There's no page number. So it's the Deer Creek Cascade Canal Diversions and then we were talking about the number of customers, summer and winter and the length of the canals.
Yes.
And so it is, maybe I'm just.
What are you looking for?
The Keystone Canal?
Keystone Canal is part of.
On the bottom.
So if you look up here on the screen real quick, so the Keystone Canal is way down here. Keystone Diversion is a single canal and there's the customers on it.
Oh, it's a new, okay, a different. In the creek.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, so as I mentioned, the Newtown Canal, which was the first one we discussed, feeds the Lake Wildwood Water Treatment Plant. It has a four million gallon per day capacity, serves roughly thirty-two hundred connections for a population of over nine thousand. It has forty-four miles of pipeline, ten pressure zones and also supplies Penn Valley. It also, the system also supplies Smartville, which is a very small treatment plant at sixty-three gallons per minute maximum capacity. Only forty-three connections. It's equivalent to a population of about a hundred with one mile of pipeline. And on a map, this is what they look like. So the purple lines are the Lake Wildwood subdivision and all the treated water lines within it. This little branch you see on the bottom half of the screen here, that is Penn Valley. Used to have its own water treatment plant, but we tied those two together for efficiency and now feed the whole thing from Lake Wildwood.
And does that water have to be pumped too?
Yes, correct. It's pumped on Pleasant Valley Road up to a set of tanks in Penn Valley. And then last but not least, over here on the left, Smartville Water Treatment Plant. You can kind of see a line right there. That's the entire system. It's fairly small. But we do have an obligation to feed it based on the Railroad Commission Order. And the Railroad Commission Order came about because at the time, we excelled here. My company, we purchased water rights from them and it came with an obligation to continue to serve those folks who are getting water from that company at the time. So we continue to.
Chip, for Smartville, I'm not seeing what is feeding the plant.
So let's back up for a second. All right, so here's.
Oh, okay.
So what you can see is the Tunnel Canal Diversion runs it down the Ripple Box like we talked about.
Oh, I see.
To Squirrel Creek. And then the river is again right here on the China Union and all the way down and feed the Smartville plant. You can see that's a lot of canal, a lot of.
That's a lot of canal for just a few.
That's why we provide additional levels of treatment at the Smartville Treatment Plant. We actually do a five block removal there as opposed to four. Extra level of protection.
Thank you.
Okay, the next diversion and we're going all the way back up the system again. We're now going into D S Canal system. And if you ask staff, they're going to call us the DS. That's how we know it. DS Canal. The picture you see here is Lower Scott's Flat or Deer Creek Diversion Dam again. Let me get this real quick. So this is, you see the dam in the background here and you see the water coming towards you in this picture. That is the DS Canal and the starting of it. As I mentioned on the last diversion, I said there was two different ways to flow water out of this diversion facility. One of them is this canal. The other one was that water flowing through the dam. Can't really see it in this picture, but essentially it's right here. There is flowing out of the dam and into Deer Creek. So I just kind of wanted to point that out. It gets a little confusing. There's two different ways we divert water here. This is what it looks like on the map. And you can see, we're actually taking it right into DS Canal, flowing it all the way down, passing through the rough and ready area a little bit. But the key thing to take away from this one is that the major supply for the DS Canal crosses over Wolf Creek right here. And we put a majority of that flow into Wolf Creek. We use that natural waterway and then we divert it at the Tar Canal, keep it entire on half of the system. So again, a very large system and the biggest portion of it is going to be the Tar Canal. So the DS system basically supplied water. System basically supplied water from the Deer Creek watershed again and imported South Yuba Canal flows. It is continuously measured and reported via SCADA. The average flows in 2019 were 49 CFS in the summer, 11 in winter. Supplies 25 downstream canals, covering a distance of roughly 83 miles, 1,004 summer irrigation water customers and 37 winter water customers, and is the main source of drinking water supply for the city of Grass Valley. This is a picture of the measuring structure on the head of the D S. And we'll talk about this one in a little bit more detail when we get to the end of this presentation. But just real quick, I'd like to reflect on the remoteness of some of these locations. Doesn't lend itself well to power. This one didn't lend itself well to solar because it's down in a hole. So we had to get creative and we found a local manufacturer who was experimenting on building power wheels for it. And they gave us a water wheel that generates power internally and empowered up the station. So pretty ingenious. I thought it was pretty cool.
So Chip, I think that might be a good time to answer this question from Mr. Otis. So he said, states, "Measuring tailwater at the end of canals where water is not recaptured downstream is critical." It was stated that there were measuring stations at the end of some of these canals. Could you clarify what is a measuring station? Is it connected into the SCADA system or is it a weir observed by a canal operator periodically?
Yeah, good question, and it's a mixture of both. We do have some stations that are automated and report in real time back to the district headquarters. We have some of the other stations that are rather manual, that distribution operators are going out and recording those results on a Excel spreadsheet daily. We're actively trying to get most of these automated. However, the costs are rather high and some of them are very small.
What would you say what's the percentage of ones that are currently automated?
Yeah.
It's not really
Yeah. There's probably four or five where there's potential for significant water leaks and we have automation of those. And we do real time report it. The rest are either readings from operators. This has been kind of a recent thing and it came up in our urban and ag water management plan. And the last two or three years of our budget, we've been throwing some money at putting in more and more of these automated stations so we can get a better handle on how much water is coming in and leaving in real time. So we'll continue to focus on that. We have money again in this year's budget to get some more of them done.
What's the average cost of putting in a station?
About $5,000.
And to remind you, there's lots of grant money out there, various state drought funding I think you try and find on.
Chip, I had a question about the measuring station ahead of D S. Is that just a large parcel flow, parcel?
Yes, correct.
A large one because of a large volume of water?
Yeah, you got it. High flows. And I'll get into the details on the parcel flow and the stealing well and all that here at the end. I got a few slides for that.
So Chip, I'd like to go back to the D S System diversion bullet point page. And I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. So it says bullet three, average flows in the summer, 49 CFS, are supporting 1,004 summer irrigation water customers.
Okay.
And 11 CFS in the winter is supporting 37 winter water customers.
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's pretty startling. I mean
Yes, as far as the diversion versus usage, that's what you're referring to.
Exactly, yeah.
So in the winter months, a lot of times we have natural flows coming in and so it's picking up runoff and
Sure.
A bunch of flow that we're ended up just putting back into the creek anyway. So it's not always the most accurate number in the wintertime because of those variables that affect the measurement in the canal.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's a great point.
But we're putting that water, we're putting 11 CFS at the top of that system.
That's correct.
And then it gets added, storm water gets added.
Yeah, you can see the breakdown here. We, we went through and gave you the breakdown on how much each canal is using on the spreadsheet page. But in the wintertime, we just gave you the entire diversion ahead. We didn't give you the breakdown per canal.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
And before we move off, because I see we have another question. It says, "What are you seeing about the impact of the rise of gold mine proposal on Wolf Creek?" So we will be bringing forward to the board at the next board meeting, which is January 26, the water supply assessment for the rise mines. We'll review all of that data with the board at that time.
Great. What my company, the B Canal. Somebody called up a couple winters ago and said the B Canal is full during the winter. How come? And then I see it only has two winter customers.
Yeah.
But it's full.
It's all runoff.
It's all runoff.
The amount of sheet flow we get into some of these canals is substantial and very amazing.
I've seen it.
We do the best we can to gut these things down and pull all the checks and spills and pass that water down to the natural ravines, but we just get inundated during these big storms.
But I didn't think it was during the storm.
Oh, well.
In this particular case, but I'll check with that person.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be good. Generally speaking, we don't allow any new connections on the B. We're trying to eliminate it as winter water canal.
And I, yeah, it goes off. Yeah.
B Canal.
The B Canal.
It's down towards the bottom of this list.
Yeah.
Okay. As I mentioned, the D S System supplies the city of Grass Valley and the water treatment plant. They do have a maximum daily capacity of 5 million gallons per day. They have 2,486 service connections, which supports a population of nearly 5,000. And again, they are the water service provider within the city of Grass Valley. They are intertied with our system and we do help them out on, actually, recently, they've become self-sufficient and they can perform their maintenance on their storage, which is kind of cool. But in the past, every year, they used to go onto our system for about a month while they cleaned out their sedimentation basin. So, yes, progress.
We have one more question here. I think it's from a pretty good one. Would you clarify this from the attendant? Would you clarify automation of SCADA versus just telemetry for the measurements? Essentially, are we using SCADA for measurements or are we using SCADA to operate the canal?
Good question. So we'll get to this at the end, but I'll cover the question right now. When I refer to SCADA, SCADA is basically receiving the data from our field and populating it in a computer system for, okay? It's not doing an automation, it's not automatically adjusting the flows of the canal in real time. That's under our distribution plan, our distribution operator.
Yeah, just for the general public. So SCADA is referencing a remote operating system that can be, or measurement system that can be utilized in a number of different types of infrastructure, whether it be sewers or water, water treatment plants or hydro power facilities. So in this particular situation, when we're referencing SCADA for canals itself, it's more of a utilizing reporting component of it. So it's really a piece of a wide computer where you have a main computer hub that can tune to remote units out at specific field sites. And in the case of where you have a little bit more horsepower going on like a treatment plant, you can do some operations of the facility remotely or monitoring the facility.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
And we'll, again, if you bear with me, when we get to the end, we'll cover this in a little bit more detail for you all. Okay, moving on to the Bear River System and the first one we're going to cover is the Combi Phase diversion, which you see in the picture here. This is the Van Gleezen Dam or Combi, as most locals know it as well. The pipe at the bottom of the screen is the pipeline going to the Combi Over Powerhouse. And then you can see a little bit of water flowing out right there. That's where we make our upstream flows into the Bear River. The facility itself doesn't look that big because it just supplies these canals here in purple. But you're going to see the diversions that we register through this facility are very high. And that's because the Combi Phase System is also supplying the Combi Over System. And that's in the next slide. So although the canals are not very long, the diversions are very high and that's because it's supporting a whole other set of canals we're going to talk about next. So the supplies for this facility come from natural Bear River water flows as well as imported Yuba River flows. Those are continuously measured and reported back to our SCADA computers. The average flows in the summer, and again, this is for 2019 and they're rather high, 123 CFS. And in the winter, it was 35 CFS. And as I mentioned, that's because it also supplies, supplies the Combi Over System, which we'll be talking about next. Talked about the in-stream flows. We do have 12 downstream canals that we are supplying and that provide service to 400 summer customers and 34 winter irrigation customers. It is the main source of drinking water supply for the Lake of the Pines Treatment Plant. And this is the parcel weir here where we're measuring flows and reporting that data back. And then here's a breakdown of the canals that are supported by this facility and which we go to. So here's the Lake of the Pines Water Treatment Plant. It has a 5 million gallon per day capacity, provides service to roughly 2,500 connections, which is over 7,000 people in population. It has 42 miles of pipeline, five different pressure zones, and is intertied with the Lo Marica Water System. Here's a map showing the pipelines again in the blue color here. You can kind of see it serves basically just the Lake of the Pines subdivision with a little bit going out Combi Road. And then this is the Table Meadows and Dark Horse area here. This one line right here that you see is grayed out, but through all the way to the top of the screen, that is the intertied pipeline with Lo Marica running all the way up to the Grass Valley Airport.
And just a real quick reminder, we are getting a few complaints through the chest that people can hear are flipping again.
Oh, right.
I forgot to. So thank you for the reminder.
Overall, for 2020, the Lake of the Pines Water Treatment Plant produces 401 million gallons. Okay. So as I mentioned, the Combi Phase System also supplies the Combi Over System. What you can see in this picture is this section of canal here, the Combi Phase System coming down. It interties right here with the Combi Over System, which you see crossing the Bear River. And then continues on, this is Combi Phase 2 this direction. This is obviously a fairly old picture because this facility is all piped now, where we put in that major project, the 96-inch pipe. Here's a picture of the crossing that the engineering team did. Marvelous work on this whole thing. And this facility itself supplies these canals that you see here in this map.
We have another quick question. Would the cost of summer water go up if there was no winter water offered? Yes, only from the perspective that any of the water rates that were set to recover strictly overhead costs would be distributed amongst a lower number of customers. And so that would mean each customer's fair share portion of those overhead costs would be increased.
Okay, again, here is the Combi Over System and all the facilities it supplies. Here's the measuring station, the parcel flow where we measure that, send it back here to the district computer systems. Again, it's kind of a review of the same bullets that supplied water from Bear River Watershed as well as imported Yuba River flows. Past SCADA, we have average flows in 2019 of 88 CFS and 29 CFS in the winter. Supplies 46 downstream canals covering a distance of over 106 miles, provides 1,991 summer irrigation water customers and 497 winter water customers, and also acts as the backup source of supply for the North Auburn Reef Water Treatment Plant and can also supply Rock Creek Reservoir, PG&E, and help assist PCWA with some supplies on that arm as well. Just a very large facility here. You can see the high number of canals it supplies. The biggest one on this list is the Camp Far West at over 13 miles long. So very large facility there.
Chip, just so I'm clear, the Combi Phase 1 is what, the flow that you identify in that canal system is what supports Combi Phase 2. I mean, is that correct?
No. So let me back up real quick, back to that map. Or maybe, maybe this is a good spot. So we divert, we divert off of Combi Reservoir. It goes into the Combi Phase 1 Canal.
Right.
It turns into the Combi Phase 2 Canal here. The Combi Over System that we're talking about currently splits off right here. And that's a different measurement. So let's back up a little bit through. So, slide. So you can see here, the Combi Phase 1 Canal in the summer, we had 122 CFS diverted out of that facility in 2019. That was the average flows. Okay?
Right.
Now, when you compare that to the average flows on the Combi Over, it was only 88. So you can see the difference between the two fed the rest of the Combi Phase 2 system. So let me walk you through that.
Well, I'm just looking at
122 CFS was coming down this system here. This is the Combi Phase System. 88 CFS of that was diverted off to the Combi Over System. The remaining balance went down the Combi Phase 2.
Ah, okay. So 123 doesn't supply just those 400, correct?
Correct. Yeah, it's a little deceiving in that regard. And this is the only place where one canal feeds a whole different diversion system.
Okay, that, that's actually what my question was.
Okay, yeah. Both of them are way more straightforward than this because it's just one-to-one. They pull off a creek and you measure it.
Right.
This one's a little more complicated.
Yeah, well, that makes sense. Thank you for that.
Here, Combi Over System, very large system. We move into the North Auburn Water Treatment Plant. And again, this supply is redundant and a backup supply, but it does, it can supply. And when PG&E has their outage in November, every year, we do utilize this supply for about 15 years, supply in our Auburn area. It can produce 6 million gallons a day, has 2,500 service connections with a population of 7,500, 49 miles of pipeline, four pressure zones, and has multiple interties with PCWA. And this, these particular interties, we can both help each other. So it's very useful. This is the service area, the treated water drinking lines in the North Auburn area. Pretty narrowly focused to the North Auburn section only. The rest of it's PCWA.
You say that it's a redundant supply. What does that mean?
So it is the main source of, let's see if I have a good map for this. Do you forgive me? I'm going to skip over it. So, the main source of supply for the North Auburn Water Treatment Plant comes out of Rock Creek Reservoir. I'm going to walk you through how that happens. So up here on the top right-hand portion of the screen is Rollin Flake. Below Rollin Flake, after we generate power through the powerhouse, it flows into the Bear River just briefly. It goes right into the Bear River Canal. The Bear River Canal is a PG&E facility, but it does house and contain some of our water in it. It flows on down, goes through the Halsey PG&E Powerhouse, flows on down into Rock Creek Lake, and we can divert right out of Rock Creek Lake and into our water treatment plant, which is right here.
Is that the only supply to that treatment plant?
No. So that's, that's the supply, that's the main source of supply. But if we back up here and go back to this other map, here's the treatment plant right here. You can see we can feed it from the Combi Over System as well. So we have two different raw water supplies. That's why it's called redundant? Correct.
Okay. So which one do we use more?
Rock Creek is our normal feed, the Bear River Canal.
Why would that be?
It's usually of better quality. Going through the Combi Over System involves a lot of miles of canal where it has more, it's subject to more contamination and turbidity and whatnot. So we try to stay on the cleaner source of supply.
Isn't the Bear Canal also an open canal?
It is, but it is a higher volume and doesn't travel through as much population. And so generally speaking, it's much cleaner.
It again reminds me how complicated this is and how amazing it is that this team manages this network.
I'm sure. And on that subject, how's, what do we do, do interties? How's that water measured and accounted for back and forth? Is it charged out?
Yeah, so great question. It depends. Generally speaking, most of our interties are just to help each other out in emergencies and whatnot. We don't do a lot of very fine-tuned tracking and billing and whatnot. It's usually we're helping each other out. There are a few locations where we do track it because it's a thing that happens every year. But no, generally speaking, in most of our systems, we're here to help each other out.
And the water for the city of Lincoln goes to the Bear Canal as well?
Yes, correct.
The PCWA can add and measure more.
Yes, we'll get to that as well. It does go through the Bear River Canal. We're supplying it down that. All right, next one is the Next one is the Fiddler Green diversion. This is a very small diversion, as you can see here on the map. And it follows that same path, to be honest with you. There's a number of ways to get water into this system, but for the most part, it comes down the PG&E Bear River Canal into Rock Creek Lake, comes back out into the Fiddler Green Canal, Wise Canal, where we divert it into our Fiddler Green system and supply a small number of customers with that facility, as you can see here. All right. And then next, and I think this is the last, is our Auburn Ravine System Diversions. The left-hand side of this picture is AR-1, as we all know it, but it's the Auburn Ravine 1 Canal System. The one on the right is the Hemp Hill Diversion Facility. This gets its supply, just like we have been talking, through the PG&E Bear River Canal. It flows down the Bear River Canal into Rock Creek, into the Wise Canal and Fiddler Green, where it goes to the Wise Powerhouse. The PG&E generates power with it right here and then dumps it into Auburn Ravine. It then flows naturally down the natural water course, where we divert it right here at Auburn Ravine 1. And then the balance comes on down Auburn Ravine, where we divert it at Hemp Hill right Here's a picture of the measuring structures. The one on the left is the measurement structure at Auburn Ravine 1. The one on the right is the Hemp Hill Measuring Station. And these diversions, so the Auburn Ravine 1 is located approximately two miles west of the city of, or the town of Oxford. And then the Hemp Hill is within the city limits of Lincoln, basically by Ferrari Ranch Road. And I think it's called Green Ravine, it's a huge cross street. These are supplied via Bear River Natural Watershed runoff and imported Uba River flows. Flows are continuously measured and reported. Average flows in the summer, 161 CFS and 3.8 in the winter. No in-stream flow requirement below Hemp Hill. And it supplies 16 downstream canals, covering a distance of 55 miles, and provides 572 irrigation customers in the summer and 34 irrigation customers in the winter. And here is the breakdown of what that looks like.
I have a question about that. You said that the diversion for this, which canal you said was the intersection Ferrari Ranch Road and Green Ravine?
Yeah. That, sorry, that is where the measuring station is.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Yeah, no, that, we're all familiar with where the Hemp Hill diversion is. I don't think we're all so super familiar with where the measuring is.
Right.
Good catch.
That's where the camera is.
Yeah.
The fish camera.
The fish camera.
Fish cam. Oh, the gating station.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There we go.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions on that? Now we'll move into the thing that we've gotten a bunch of questions about tonight, water measurement. We talked about this one, this is the DS Canal. I think I'm going to start with our treated water metering. So every single treated water connection is metered. In the past, we used to have radio meters where our guys would drive around in a truck, and as they got close enough to the meter, it would send the data from meter to the truck. But we are rapidly switching out that old archaic system to new cellular read meters. To date, we have approximately 11,280 meters installed. We have about another 8,000 to go. So we're progressing. Last year, we only replaced these meters when they failed, and that's because we had a really tough time getting the components and getting the meters due to the supply shortage and the chip shortage. We hope that will improve in 2022, and we have put enough budget together next year to hopefully get through the rest of the system. The benefits to using these cellular meters is they can give us water usage in real time, which is a very, very useful tool. This particular screen you see here is a combination of all of our treated water usage district-wide on a day-by-day basis. So we can see in real time that it starts to hit 100 degrees, and all of a sudden, here goes our usage sky-high, and we can ramp up the plants as needed to handle that demand. But more importantly, I think, is that this gives us the tools to give our customers real-time water usage, so they know what's going on in their own system. Once we get a meter installed, we can give them a login. They can log into the data here, and they can see their actual treated water usage. This particular customer is actually doing a rather amazing job at, they're only averaging 43 gallons per day, which is very low usage. But the reason we threw this one on here is I kind of wanted to show you the resolution at which these meters can go to. If you look at the left-hand side of the screen, this first bar here at 1:00 AM in the morning, there's only a gallon and a half of usage, probably a toilet flush.
I mean, that's how, that's all of a measurement we can go down into with these new meters.
It's very, very impressive. Additionally, these new meters will detect when there's usage all throughout the day, and they'll automatically send us notification of potential leak. And they'll also red-flag us for potential high usage. So just a very useful tool for us and our customer base moving forward. Questions on that? Okay, moving on to the raw water measurement. So this here is a partial, we're, the way these things work is basically we set up a control structure where we know the width and the velocity of the water passing through here, and how much is backed up. And we measure that through this little staff gauge. This has a bunch of numbers on it that tells us how much water is packed up, and we can then do the calculation. This is where, where the hydrographers work their magic. So that looks very simple, and it is in this picture. But what you don't see is that there's also another sensing line that's going through the side of this concrete wall that reports that elevation into this stilling well. Okay? Inside this stilling well, you have that same staff gauge making the measurement. If you were just going to manually read this, you would open up that stilling well, you'd look in there, and you'd write down the number and report it back to the office. But our new stations are automated, and where we drop an electronic transducer down into that water level, and it reports that water level up to us in real time and sends it back to the office.
But that's still done manually, right? Some, a person?
Nope. It's out there permanently.
Oh.
So in this particular situation, you can't really see the transducer. I should have had a better picture of it. But it's inside this can, and it's reporting electronically that data into this box, which is then using cellular technology to send that data back to our office. And then the solar panels you see there are charging at the batteries, so we can continue to run this. These locations are all very remote, there's not power at any of them. So we take that data, and this is what it looks like. So this is, people ask about SCADA and what we do with it. Well, basically, that data is transmitting to our SCADA computer. Our SCADA computer is compiling this data and putting it into trend graphs like you see here. This is the DS Canal ahead, and what you can see here is that in the winter months, flows were very low right here in the middle. But if you hit April and flows really start picking up, well, that's because it's irrigation season start. The other thing I wanted to point out is, a lot of folks mention how we don't really track the usage, and people buy X amount of flow, we just put it in the canal and we go on our merry way. That's not true, and I think this trend graph really shows how we operate this system. If you'll notice, at the beginning of April, we ramp flows up in preparation for irrigation season, but you'll notice, we don't hit peak flows until August. And that's because our distribution operators are out there actively monitoring the ends of the canals and ensuring we're not having too much water at the end, but also making sure we have enough to meet our customers' demand. And that's a real-time adjustment we're making day-to-day. So it's not just our customers buy 100 meters and inches of water, so on April 15th, we put 100 meters inches in and we walk away. It doesn't work that way. We are actively monitoring and re-regulating the system on a daily basis.
Chip, how many guys are actually doing that work?
Yeah.
One day per day.
We have 20 distribution operators.
20 days?
Yes. But 20 distribution operators in total, obviously with days off and whatnot.
Right, right. That's, that's a large.
It is. So when you have 500 miles to cover, it takes a lot. And there's a lot of measuring stations out in the system, so they have a lot of ground to cover. And we already talked about this, I was going to talk about how natural flows, or we use natural waterways for flows, but we covered that. The next thing we'll talk about just real quickly is there's two types of ways we monitor the flows to our irrigation customers. One is through a raw water box, and that's what you see in the foreground of this picture here, typical canal irrigation box. The other is a manifold outlet service, we'll cover that in just a second. The way the raw water box works is essentially a customer buys an allotment of water from NID. We go out, we put the appropriate orifice on a board, measure to six inches of head, that's what this picture is showing, and that establishes a maximum flow rate those people-
That's the key, right? The maximum flow rate. So that's really similar with treated water. They essentially are buying in at a maximum peak day use.
Now, just because this particular customer bought 1 meters inch of water doesn't mean that's what they're using 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. They can use much less than that. This orifice plate really just restricts them to a maximum flow. So I just wanted to make that point. Many boxes you'll see have more than one of these holes in it. For example, here's a good shot of, you can see down at the bottom of that box, you can see the water flowing through the hole down there, kind of cool. But it also has another hole here at the top. Well, that's because this particular customer buys summer and winter water. So this particular flow, I think it's winter water. Summer comes, we'll flip that board over, and they'll get the higher volat, the higher volume, bigger hole.
So we have a couple of questions. And Chip, I think you and I have had a discussion about this one in particular, what's the ratio of raw water sold to raw water actually used sound? So I think, but this is referencing is the water loss percentage.
Yes. And I don't have that off the top of my head. We do track it. It's-
I must say, it's like-
We can't track individual usage because continuous usage in the barns, I think they were talking about.
Yeah, I think they're talking about the haul. So I think the haul, when we were looking at it, it was, it was like 15 to 16% in an average year, 16?
Yeah, we can bring that back in more detail. And I figure we'll be needing to use that information as we move through the plan for water data analysis.
And this is a percentage of actually used versus what sold?
It's going to be more, it's going to be a comparison of amount diverted into our canal versus amount purchased.
Oh, diverted purchase, so there's that, that loss factor in there and absorption factor.
Yeah, so we are, you refer to as water loss, or carriage water, or non-revenue generating water. So whether you have a closed pressurized system, like a treated water system, their water loss usually runs about 8 to 10% versus a raw water system, which is much less efficient because it's an open, non-pressurized canal system. It's a little bit more prone to leakage, and we have a little bit less control because it's not pressurized. The percentage we, we calculate is about 16% a year.
The other thing that we run into is that a comparison of water purchased versus the amount of water diverted into the system changes rather drastically based on the hydrology and the type of year we're in. So in a very wet year such as 2017, our customers didn't divert as much water, didn't use as much water, just because the ground stayed wet, it was a very wet year. In comparison to last year, one of the driest years on records, people were using more of what they purchased. And so that delta spread was much bigger. And so we've been tracking that a little bit, and we'll try to bring that data forth. But it is one of the things we need to analyze as we move forward.
And that's consistent with also treated water. When the, you know, the biggest thing that impacts the amount of water used is outdoor water usage. And indoor water usually stays fairly static. Outdoor is really impacted by weather, whether it be rain, or heat, or how cold it is, or how long it stays cold. And so you'll see both treated water and raw water start tracking up in consumption along the lines and trending with the weather. I think there is one more question.
Couple more questions.
Yeah, I'm getting to it.
Oh, you're getting there.
Yep. All right. So let's see here.
Should we cover the last one and answer all the questions? Just the last slide?
Yeah.
Do it.
Okay. So the last type of service on a raw water system is piped manifold. And this is a situation where the canal is, the flows are basically in a pipe instead of a canal. You can see each one of these individual lines is going off to a customer. And in the middle here, you'll see, it's very hard to see, but there's basically a silver coupling, and that's what we call a dough flow. Basically, what that is, is a little coupling with an orifice plate in it, and that's how we regulate flows based on what they purchased. Very simple methods, but effective, and that's another way we measure and monitor flow to our raw water customers. Okay.
All right. Are you ready for the hot seat?
Yes.
Okay. What is the rationale for using 2019 as the basis for flows?
Yeah, great question. We did not have the 2020, let me back up a little bit. I started this slideshow way back in last year, which was not all that long ago. But we didn't have full validation of all of our flows for 2020 yet, and 2019 was fully validated and submitted to the state. So we used those numbers because we have them. Plus, it was a, kind of a more or less an average year.
It was an average year.
Right. Whereas 2020 was a very dry year, and it uses a little longer chart. So trying to get kind of just a general average of what we see in these systems, and that's why we use them. We obviously have the data for all the other years, and we can supply it, but again, we were trying to shoot.
That's what we do modeling in the Plan for Water. We'll use a longer-term average as opposed to the single year. This is just for illustration purposes.
Yep.
All right. This is a good one. How can a, and how can an individual customer tell if they have a cellular meter and log on to the website to obtain their daily usage?
That's a great question, and basically, the only way they'll know is to call into our customer service team, and they'll be able to assist them. We hope to have the majority of our system converted over by the end of next, of this year. But be patient, we're trying, we're getting there. But if you need to know right now, call into our customer service tomorrow.
Okay. Let's see here. This is a good request, I kind of thought the same thing myself, for future reference and just for posting this slide deck onto the website. Can we just add on the tables that are referencing the amount of flows and the length of the canal run, that it's in miles and what the units-
Yeah, I appreciate that note and that comment. I need to put the year at the top, and we'll add some additional information. Also, the maps need a legend on the cover, so we will get that squared away as well.
All right. Agreed. Good question. All right. One last question here. Is there a demand management potential to reduce the summer volume of water in NID? And what is a relative guess as to what the potential is? There is. So there's a couple of things that are going on right now. The state is coming forward with more and more landscape requirements for the approval of new landscaping, which inherently by those new requirements, they do reduce summer water use. But so that's also a policy decision. So that's something that will get tackled by the board as we move through the Plan for Water process. You know, there's always an ability to limit summer water use, specifically if you're watering the straight lawns, or there's not agricultural economic component to it. We could, you know, the board could so desire to keep some of the conservation measures that are included in the current drought contingency plan ongoing. You know, you can only water grass four days a week, I'm just making things up, which would certainly reduce summer consumption. But there's a lot of policy considerations to be given. In order to address long-term supply needs, one of those options could be to reduce consumption through a variety of policy mechanisms. And so I think it's something we need to continue to talk about and keep on the field.
Do we look at these conservation measures more specifically with treated water customers versus raw water customers that are getting larger landscape?
In my opinion, both should be looked at. Treated water is always, it's kind of the low-hanging fruit because it's easier to control, and they're more, tend to be more quickly to move on and to adapt to new rules, as opposed to folks who are more in a rural setting. I think it's just their connectivity to the agency as far as social media and what they're doing day in and day out. And then kind of the neighbor-to-neighbor policing of water use. So I think there certainly is opportunity with both sets of customers.
Yeah, and I'll also say that with the recent droughts, the state has really focused on treated water usage and really been hammering that message. So I get that, it is, it's easier to start there, but it's coming for irrigation water as well. The state is toying with and has mentioned water budgets even on the agricultural side of the world. So we'll see where that all heads, it's yet to be determined.
I mean, one last kind of question, and this is a request, is it possible to place arrows on the map, the canal maps to indicate the direction of flow?
Oh, yeah. Good question. See if we can get that done.
Hey, it's pretty easy to do that one. All the questions we have in the chat, is there any questions from the folks on the phone? If so, please raise your hand. If so, please raise your hand. Chris? I have not either. All right, last chance, folks on the phone. I'm not seeing any. Um, oh, we have another question. Watershed boundaries on the map, please. Yeah, I, but we'll have to look into that one. I'm not sure how these maps were made. He's basically pulling it from GIS and putting the hash marks on it.
Yeah, we'll see what you can do with that.
We'll see what we can do. If it's easy, we'll certainly do it. All right. Any more questions from the board?
Quick comment on conservation. So we still have relatively, well, some people won't agree with this, but compared to the rest of California, our water is still relatively expensive. In other areas, it could be 10 times the price here and that has forced every user to be more conservation-minded. And so you have the most efficient irrigation systems, you have the, the most bang for your buck. And, um, you know, it's just driven by the cost of water. They can't afford to waste a drop. But even then, they're running short of water.
And I think a member of the public just chimed in with an additional comment, which I think is, um, dovetails into what you're saying. Thanks for helping us to better understand the NID system, an impressive asset in our region and one that contributes much to the well-being of Nevada County residents with the food production that it enables. According to the Nevada County Crop and Livestock Report, 19.7 million of ag products were grown in the county in 2020. Farmers and ranchers are producing meat, eggs, fruit, vegetables, honey, and more for local residents. Many of these producers are winter water customers as year-round farming opportunities increase. Look forward to a Plan for Water that continues to support our farmers and ranchers who feed our community.
Well said.
And we have Mr. Linton, quick question. Thanks, everyone. Sorry if you've mentioned it. What is the percentage of canals that have a meter at the end?
Yeah.
I don't think we have a, a straight percentage and I think it's something that we could come back with and calculate it.
Exactly.
Yeah. We're all kind of guesstimating over here, so we'll get a real answer for you.
I have one more question. One, one type of diversion we didn't talk about is the, um, the pumps that are in the natural waterway. We have several customers, did we mention that? Did you talk about that?
They're listed in the spreadsheet. You'll see like, uh, for instance, you'll have the Deer Creek and it may have two customers on it or, or the Auburn Ravine Natural. We, let me dive into that page real quick. Essentially, what you're gonna see is in that spreadsheet, it lists every canal, but it also lists where there is a natural, you know, already closed it. But for the Auburn Ravine Systems, the very first canal listed in the canal spreadsheet is Auburn Ravine Natural. That's the natural waterway, that's the Auburn Ravine itself. And you can see in the column on the right, there's 30 summer customers on that.
I see, and then Jody, now, so if it says the natural, that means that's...
That's the creek itself.
And they, they just have pumps that are in the, in the canal?
Yes.
In the, in the creek.
How do you monitor the volume?
We go out and, and rate their pump and, and measure it and charge them accordingly.
How often do you check them?
Well, that's something that becomes a question. So we have to go back periodically and review it. I don't think we do it often enough and that's something we need to work on.
I've had, uh, customers on, on the Auburn Ravine Natural and it says they wish they could be metered because they think, you know, they don't, they don't believe they use the water in their, you know, that their pump is rated for. And, and so I, that would be easy, though I don't know how many total natural customers there are, but the state's trying to get us to do volumetric measurement at the farm gate or at the, at the connection. It seems like these would be a good starting place to, um, rather be meters than not.
Yeah, the, the real challenge we run into when metering raw water is the amount of debris that builds up in a meter and makes it, uh, on a pump account, that may be a little bit different because of the screens, that generally speaking.
I took my screens out of mine.
Yeah.
If you got a good enough pump, it's gonna pass everything.
We have one more quick comment, um, from Mr. Wallen. Many of us made very specific comments to the urban, urban and ag water management plan early last year. NID's response was that all these comments would be addressed in the Plan for Water. How does NID propose to include those comments? It's my understanding that it wasn't necessarily that we were going to go back and re, re respond to comments made back then, but that we were going to address many of the comments through the network.
I think our hope was that as we walked through the Plan for Water process, many of those questions and concerns that were brought up will be answered as we walk through the data. Keep in mind, we've only had potentially two workshops and we really just meant to be system overview analysis and not diving into the...
Okay. So there's an opportunity as we move through the Plan for Water process to kind of re-bring up those comments in the context of the Plan for Water and the new information that we're presenting. Okay, and then we, it looks like we have, every time I think I finally caught up on the comments.
That's part of it.
And then we also have a couple of, uh...
We have a hand raised.
Linton, I see that. I'm gonna get to the hand raised in one second. Um, all right, somebody's requesting topographic release on the base map. We will look into the maps. Mr. Feldman in State, thank you for an informative and well-presented webinar. Appreciate the level of detail and interaction with the folks asking the question. And then we have one question, um, hand raised on the phone, and can you please unmute yourself and go ahead and go?
Hi, this is Greg Jones. Sorry, uh, I think, I think you just answered... Yeah, it's Greg. Uh, sorry, I think you just answered the question, um, about the questions that came up for the, uh, in the urban and the ag plan, Chip. And Jen, I think you just answered that appropriately. Most of those questions related to data, um, systems, and so when we get to that stage in the Plan for Water, um, I think at stage six, seven, uh, we'll be discussing a lot of those questions then.
Perfect. And Chris, can you confirm, is the hand raised today? Oh, perfect. All right, well, that's always nice and easy.
Well, I just wanna say thank you to all of the staff and Chip and your team. This is, again, remarkable, detailed, great work.
Yeah.
And, and as I move through the community, people are always remarking about, oh my gosh, that was great. What a great job you and your team have done. So I just wanted to step that on.
Really terrific. Appreciate that.
Yeah. So then the next stage will be with water rates. And I think that will be, um, equally as interesting and complex, so this will be a good educational stage for all of us, I am sure.
And who's presenting?
Um, it'll be a team between Chip's team, Tor, um, as well as Dustin.
Great.
And if there's anything in particular you want us to focus on, just shoot me an email or let me know and we'll be happy to make sure it's addressed.
Thank you.
How are they different from area of origin?
Great Dustin question.
Uh, let's see, Kiko, um, she's asking how many attendees were here. It varied, um, throughout the evening between, it was like 38 and 40. I know a number of those were NID staff, um, but that's probably just an idea. All right, that's all we have.
Thank you.
Perfect the clock of the toss. Perfect.
Good job.
Well done, everyone.
Chip, Jennifer, I thank you all for all your questions and showing interest today. We look forward to your, any more robust expressions about our water.
Don't they comment on Sondra Jensen?
It's a special meeting. It is a journey.
Very good.